I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know I purposely sized on this one.
Well, everybody, thank you for coming. They're all so quiet and serious. Tonight, my goal is for this to be productive and succinct and short. So as we kind of started thinking about goals, a lot of you were thinking about goals this week and you already started reflecting on what you would like to see happen in the district. So the format for tonight, I think, as I kind of read through what was on your minds, I was pleased because I saw a lot of common threads and a lot of very similar visions of how we would like to see the district go. So some of you made a big, long list of lots of things that you would like to see happen and some of you just have two main things that you'd like to see happen. What you have in front of you is some thoughts from the administration as well as to the board members, the thoughts that you shared with me. I would like to begin, first of all, by inviting the few that are here, thank you for coming, to, if you'd like to join a seat at the table, we've only got a couple of members from the public. You're welcome to jump in and join the conversation. If you are more comfortable back there, that's fine. But I do want you guys to participate and join in and share your thoughts and we'll absolutely give you an opportunity to do so. But before we do that, I'm going to give you a few minutes just to reflect on your own thoughts. So what you have in front of you is the things that you have been thinking about. If you have a long list, see if you can kind of synthesize it into one big picture idea or maybe prioritize. These are lots of things that I'd like to see happen, but I'm really most concerned about these handful of things. Think about what you would like to see long-term as a vision or a goal for our district. And you can either highlight some of the things that you wrote, you can jot it down on a three-by-five card, but then we'll have an opportunity to just kind of think about what your summary thoughts are and we'll pull all those together and come up with some big-picture goals for the district. So I'll give you maybe two minutes to just look over your own notes and your own thoughts and just see if you can summarize some big-picture ideas. Just another minute to think. Is this good? Okay. Right now, what I'd like you to do is just turn and talk to somebody next to you, just an elbow partner, and just kind of share your thoughts. Feel free, it looks like we've got some pretty good training. We might have to do a group of three. And just share what your ideas are first with somebody else before we share with the whole group. I'll give you two minutes and I'll ask you to switch.
I'm very selfish about my goals. Certification would be the word to use.
If you haven't switched yet, take an opportunity to switch. Make sure you've got a chance to go.
And purposefulness of planning.
How do you say that?
Oh, yeah.
I have to play with Kevin. I'm terrible. When I was with Dad, I was terrible. I love the front nine, the back nine. I didn't done the back nine. I can't master them all. Tell me later.
Thank you. So hopefully you've had a chance to kind of look over the things that you've been reflecting on over the last week or so and you might have a couple of bullet points, main ideas. I'm just curious if we have some common themes. So if you don't mind, I'd just like to go around and you could tell me what you jotted down or highlighted on your paper.
Do you mind if I ask a question before we do this? I see that you put up communication, SAG Harbor Experience, accountability, that in the last couple of years, we have defined as our vision are over, you know, the super goals on top of the umbrella there. So have we all agreed that we're going to stay with those for this year? Is that the framework we're following?
Well, I think that we might see that those are still applicable, but I'm certainly open to the idea that if something else comes up tonight, we can address that. If these still seem to fit, that's great, too. That's the brainstorming session from tonight. All right, go ahead, Eric.
Stay in line with the--
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Staying in line with the SAG Harbor Experience, I think it would be nice to really brand our athletics program from everything, from our facilities to our uniforms, to our community involvement, to getting a more commitment, a higher commitment level from student athletes. In terms of, in terms of a large goal is just to, what it's like to be a SAG Harbor athlete or a Pearson High School, Middle School athlete. A unified vision, I guess.
Did you have other specific ideas around that? Like, help paint that picture for us.
Well, I outlined some of them in my goals that are trying to get us there. Specifically, what, you know, for this year, it's a, I'm really, my number-one goal is to look at the viability of each sports program and to determine whether or not it's an in-house program or is it a shared sports program. And I think that goes along with the identity of like, for example, if I'm a field hockey player and I play at SAG Harbor, then that's, you know, that's one thing. But if I'm maybe a tennis player and that we know that that's a shared sport moving forward, then we could help these athletes get into the culture and understand that they're going to be playing tennis at diversity level at a different facility, but at the same time, try to mesh it all together and see what works for the current population of students. With that, I'm going to make sure that we, I really, really want to work towards having all our uniforms and everything we wear be capitalized.
Don't look at me. You know that was one of my issues.
Just, I want, I want everybody to know that that's a Pearson team and be proud of it, so.
Excellent, excellent. Was there anything else?
I outlined them and I have a series of goals.
Perfect. I just want to make sure that I might come out. Scott, go ahead.
I'm hoping to move forward with more and more communications with reducing our dependence on paper, looking more for electronic sources of information, you know, expanding the use of the parent portal, the website in particular as sources of information, but also increasing digital collaboration, whether it be among the staff members or district and community, whichever.
Mike?
We talked about continuing to strengthen K-12, sort of what the vertical experience is for students in terms of content and instruction. That includes at six to 12 for us, continuing to work on the MYP authorization and even in the later years of high school, continuing to develop and integrate the IB program. I think, yeah, that's accountability, success. Something we didn't get to talk about, but I wrote down as looking at school and student culture this year, now that I've had a year's experience engaging the administration and folks. And at the elementary school, they have a great opportunity with morning program to sort of be very purposeful and intentional about assalishing that culture and what are our opportunities to make sure that we're taking care of kids holistically, which I think will benefit them academically as well. But how we articulate our values and expectations to them and how we hold them accountable, I think maybe we could strengthen that, too. Or at least figure out as a team how we, what we want to do and how we want to do that in the later grades. I think that's part of SAG Harbor Experience, but also communication, how we communicate that to them and our community.
Yeah, it kind of falls in off three, right? Because I'm thinking a culture of accountability, communicating that with kids, but also how we communicate that with kids, right?
And how they experience Pearson.
Yeah. Go ahead, Matt.
Well, definitely the curriculum alignment seems to be a common theme if you look at, you know, the things that we spoke about in Cabinet and, you know, I'm sure the boards discussed that as well. But then clearly recognizing the opportunity that Stella Maris now affords us and making sure that we're very mindful of the research that we put in and the exploration that's done this year so that moving forward, we can make the most out of that, out of that opportunity for SAG Harbor. You know, we have some specifics in our goals, but that definitely appears to be a general, a thread that shows up in almost everybody's thoughts.
Tom, what are your thoughts?
For me, it was really being very purposeful about how we use the space at Stella Maris. I think it's going to take a lot of community support and partnering with other organizations that can help make it work for, for the community, the kids, the parents. So for me, really thinking about the use of Stella Maris and looking at the building itself and how we can plan for the little kids that hopefully will be inside of it. And then we also talked about IB a bit. We were just talking about the curriculum connections between the elementary, the curriculum at the elementary school starting to change a bit to think more in the way for teaching and learning for IB. So I think that's kind of like this underground feeling. And then this was not one of ours, but just today, I just thought about the bond project is a really big thing and surprisingly, a lot of people don't know about it. They ask all the time, well, the kids are coming to summer school. What are they building there? What are they doing there? You're thinking, how does everyone not know? I thought we did a really good job about communicating what's happening. So I think the bond project's bigger than we think. Navigating around it, we're finding is becoming like something you really have to think about, how you're getting in the door. So I just think that's something that's going to, when the kids are back again, I think the bond project will become a bigger thing to us than we had anticipated.
So it has to be under communication, right? Communicating what's happening with the bond.
Yeah.
And maybe even under communication with Estella, right?
Yeah.
Because if we want community involvement, there's going to be a lot of communication there. Excellent. Scott?
Under the SAG Harbor Experience, I want to revisit the later start time so everybody might have a better experience. And then I'm all about communication. So what I took from my two pages of goals and put on my index card is more input from the public, from the administrators around this table, and that we spend less time on operational items and more time focused on student achievement. And I think one of the things I'd like to visit, probably when it comes to the committee conversation, is how we tap into parent and community partnerships and let them come help and voice their opinion.
There's something else that you said that I didn't write down. What was a thing you said, right, for parent and community?
Public, more opportunity for the public and the administrators to have more input and less time on operational and more focused on student achievement.
So I'm going to put that over here, focus on student achievement. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
So I would say most of the things that I would zero in on would fall under accountability and success. But before I even go into that, someone like refresh my memory on what the SAG Harbor Experience really is. Because I remember who it came from. It was a particular board member. But I'm wondering if that was related to things that he found or she found favorable about someone that he or she knew who went through the district. It's a very loose term. What is it?
It's how, it's part of our, the three visions the school board established two years ago. And one was to increase communication to become engaged and active pathway for school and community. The second one was to build, share, and measure the tradition of each student achieving a successful SAG Harbor experience. And I think the thinking behind that was everyone has a unique experience here and to make sure that experience is the best for every single child. And one child's experience may be very unique for another's. One might be a highly athletic experience, one might be an IB experience, but to make sure that we build, share, and measure the tradition of each child. So that a child has a great experience, get it out there. Build on it, share it, and get it out there. And the last was to raise district-wide accountability to reinforce student and student success.
So with regard to SAG Harbor Experience, more, it's, my understanding is to, based on what you just said, which makes sense, is to encourage students to have the freedom to pursue what it is that they're passionate about and give them the support that they need to achieve their goals. So that makes sense. The things, I think Mike had touched on a few of them. Some of it is just, I would say most of it falls under accountability and success. I guess that's also somewhat variable in terms of how you define success. But we probably should be looking at some social, emotional programs based on some of the tragic incidences here. Look to evaluate what we have in place and what we might add in terms of programs to support kids and teachers as well. We also might look towards supporting or revisiting some of the interventions we have in place for graduating seniors or seniors who are in jeopardy of not graduating because we've seen a pattern emerge where the current interventions that we have are not having the desired result. In other words, we've had a, we have a pattern of five to seven seniors who are really struggling to meet the graduation requirement. And we probably should be thoughtful about what we do moving forward in terms of maybe adding some things.
This is definitely not my forte thing, so. Communication, I think that the, when the state did the audit, they said that, if I'm not, if I'm correct, Jennifer, that our level of communication was far superior than most other places.
Our website.
At our website, yeah, which is, is, should be a great place for parents to reach out to. So, I mean, I think it's an ongoing battle, so it's always there, but I think we do a really good job at it. I'm with Jeff on the SAG Harbor Experience. I think social, emotional, and dependency for drugs and alcohol definitely needs to be brought into our school. I'd like to see the coalition who has their person in our building on a day-to-day basis with our kids, somebody who has direct access. And accountability, I mean, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers and the state to standard 2% tax cap. So I think, you know, that's an accountability that we've been charged with by the state and yet we sit here and we dream about increasing all these programs and creating all this wonderful thing to create something for every single student. I think we have to become realistic of what we truly can afford and what's sustainable for this district. And I don't think we do that on a regular basis because I think in a couple of years, we're going to have to start to make some serious decisions, i.e. sports programs. We're not going to be able to offer seven in the spring or, you know, whatever. And then my last thing on accountability is shared services, which I think we're definitely on our way with. And I just, when I do goals, I think they're all ongoing. I think that they don't stop. They're year to year. It's not really attainable in a year, so.
I agree. Thanks.
Same thing that everyone else on my administrative team directly is middle-years program and the IB thing. For middle school especially, I think we finally feel like the kids from fifth to sixth are being taken care of, so I don't think that transitions a need anymore, thank goodness. But I definitely think the six to seven, seven to eight, eight to nine could be a lot stronger. So within the middle school as a unit, I feel like we need to work closer together for that academic and accountability and making sure, because there are jumps and there are a bunch of students, a handful each year, that aren't making that transition very smoothly. And then I would like, again, social, emotional. That dodgeball tournament that was a charity event went really well for the kids and I felt like it was almost like a middle school feel. And like, if we do that consistently, I think that will help build that sense of community that the kids are striving for, especially on a Friday night in the winter. Which is huge for the kids.
So--
It's everything. I was going to say it's all three of those things, but yeah.
Right. I'm just thinking about that sense of community that the elementary school has, where they're all, you know--
Exactly.
They're perfect as the nest, right?
Yes.
You want to create some sort of community at the middle.
I don't think we want a nest here. I think they want more independence, but yeah. I don't think the middle schoolers will be like, absolutely no nest, but yes. Yeah, something to tie them together, but it's somewhat cool and they can make fun of them to an extent, but it's still cool. Exactly.
More like a ropes course, you know? I'm thinking in more broader terms because I get to see all the arenas. The big word that stands out to me is sustainability. And I echo a lot of what Sandy's saying, that everything that we do, we have to think about best for children, fair for adults, but sustainable. So as we move forward to, you know, pair up to what Matt was saying about when we move forward with Stella Maris, thinking in terms of sustainability, that, that we make sure that we partner up with groups that want to lease Stella Maris so we can move carefully with the architects so that we're building, that we're working on a building that as we bring it up to New York State standards, that it's something that folks would want to lease, that would want to utilize, that, you know, we make sure also that it fits well with our community, it's accepted so that it meets the needs of senior citizens as well, that, you know, that it really becomes a hallmark and that it creates a foundation for our budget going forward and it's not a drain in any way, which I think it just has, we have to be thoughtful about it. Sustainability and revenue streams with our partner districts so that we're continuing every time someone retires that we look with our partners, our neighbors, and say, do we have to replace that or can we share, you know, in our business offices or in our fields that we're working on? That we continue conscientiously to find ways to make all of our districts sustainable with partnering, enhancing those experiences. I really believe that wellness doesn't happen, you know, when a child hurts themselves or something happens in their senior year. I think it spirals right down to our, our elementary in their feeling of community so that wellness of the child, the adult, and the whole community and bringing the community into the school and the school out into the community. So I think wellness has always been part of our, our district and our community. It just hasn't become, it hasn't, we haven't gotten that symphony going where they know where to turn. And I think the community coalition's got 12 sectors. We got to just make sure that we're communicating. So my last one is communication, is that we continue, we're doing a great job, but we can continue to do better. And again, that comes back to like the building project with that. Like, we got, we got to continue. We're meeting every single week on where we are in the building project, but we got, it has to continue with the rigor of that communication. It's, it's got to be exceptional.
Excellent. Thank you. Tom, go.
Last year, I brought up bringing IB into the lower grades. This year, I think I'd like to complete the current bond project in a smooth manner with the least amount of disruption for our academic programs as possible and to begin our new bond construction at Stella Maris, designing it in such a way to increase revenue, which kind of goes along with what we were saying, along with sustainability, to get things in Stella Maris that can help make this district offer the academic programs that we do offer and increase them in the future. And along with that, planning of Stella Maris and increasing our academic programs to create more of a middle school identity here in the secondary school by perhaps getting rid of some of the district offices and getting some of the more at-core subjects down in a middle school way. I know there's going to be some sharing, but I think that would be a great thing if we could get that done.
Excellent. Trista?
I think certainly the implementation of the IB middle years, continue to look at IB in the high school and ways to increase participation in that program. I think the social and emotional piece is huge based on, you know, the crisis that we've had over the past year. And as we talked about at the Wellness Committee, to look at all those dimensions of wellness. And I think so, you know, all of that together is extremely important. Certainly, the stainless bond project and the implementation of the Stella Maris project with the input, you know, of everyone that we've heard from already this evening. And on top of all that, my overwhelming goal would be communicate all this to all of our key stakeholders and get their input and output on going dialogue. our key stakeholders and get their input and output on going dialogue.
Excuse me. Thank you. Chris?
Um, I, I have several that are here, so I, I'd love to repeat them. In terms of IV, the other thing I'd like to see is, I know initially before we launched the program in the, um, the upper years, we talked about some objectives of having a certain percentage increase over time that would get the diploma. I don't think we've hit our, our mark there necessarily, so I'd love to see an analysis or, or exploration of kind of why we're where we are right now and how do we, you know, how do we create and enhance the program that will engage a higher percentage to actually graduate with diplomas, because we know what the benefit of that is, but I think we've kinda hit a little bit of a, of a, um, pause in being able to make that happen. So I think as we introduce the middle years, I'd love to understand that better. In terms of academics, most of our data still hasn't come out yet, so I would, I would love to be able to revisit the academic goals, we're actually looking at data from this past year, cause it's kind of hard to say where we're fragile without looking at that data, so I'm not gonna, uh, you know, mention the rest of the academic. In terms of communication, I, I think we've been mixed. In some areas, we've been outstanding, and in other areas, I think we, we haven't met up to what our expectations or community expectations are. And when I look at our communication goals from the past year, we achieved some, but others we did not achieve. So I'd love to, you know, we made a commitment to, to achieve some things, I'd like to revisit and make sure that we kind of meet those. And then, again, I, I think overall, that speaks to process. The more that we have kind of defined process of how to communicate and set it with expectations, then the more we're able to address it. I think where we fall short is when, when we were kind of organic and sporadic with how we, we do communicate. So the more consistent we are with communication, the more successful we are in that area. Um, and Eric mentioned something in the beginning about having, having kind of a visual brand for our teams, and if we go through that, it would be nice to extend that to all of our extracurricular, because when you look at our extracurricular in general, we have, you know, every flavor, and you wouldn't know that it comes from our district except for maybe the colors. So, so I like the idea, maybe, maybe it generates from athletics, because that's the place where you have kind of most of it, most of it. But it'd be nice to kind of have that visual brand.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, well, I just, uh, had a quick question. Um, so I watched that goals webinar, and they talked a lot about the difference between goals and objectives, and while I agree with everything that's been said, it seems like a lot of this is objectives, and I hope that one of the things we're gonna do is narrow it down to what should be overarching goals from the board and what the best practice according to the webinar says, was that they should be limited to two to three, I'm sorry, two to five at most. Also encourages about data collection, which you raised in the last meeting, Chris, um, and I'd love, uh, to see that on a number of fronts. For, uh, me personally, um, you know, uh, and I don't know where it fits, or maybe this is a separate goal, maybe it's psych over experience, maybe it's not.
I have other over here, and no one's common, so.
I'd like to see a, a specific goal about improving the health and wellness of our student body, um, and, uh, I've heard people mention social and emotional health, I think it's all part of that. That, so to me, that's the overarching goal. Objectives within that would be, of course, later start, um, they're, speaking of data-driven, uh, decision, as Chris knows, the data on that is clear in terms of reducing depression, reducing suicide, um, improve, improving, uh, academics, uh, performance, uh, in, in the whole, the whole lot of it. So, I think there's a lot of benefits there. I'd also see, I think, I don't remember who said it, I think Sandy did, about the substance abuse, um, would love to see us, uh, tackle that more systematically, I guess. When I look back at all materials, it seems like we have a lot of presentations. I would love to have something where we hear about best practices and something that's more integrated. So, for example, when we offer more, when kids have more to do, they're less likely, those kinds of things. And, um, Brittany, I heard you talk about transitions, um, and I know that's important to the whole administrative team. One of the things I thought that the elementary, I think we all can agree, the elementary school does so well is that kindergarten buddy program. So, again, forgive me, cause this is not a goal, it's an objective, but I would love to see a program like that brought to the middle and, uh, uh, high school. I actually mentioned this a few years ago. How great would it be when our fifth graders leave to come up here, they're reunited with their fifth grade buddy from kindergarten? Because those, uh, students I believe are what, 10th or 11th grade then? And what an incredible thing that those kids then were given a tour. Now, obviously not every kid would have there, but we have a heck of a lot of students in this community who go in here from kindergarten all the way through, now pre-K all the way through, so I would love to see that brought back. I actually think it would just be good for the younger middle school kids, I actually think it would also be good for the older kids, because I'm a believer that the older kids are rise to the occasion when they're around the younger kids. I think we've seen that in the reading programs, so things like that. Um, I also, and I, I agree with everything else that's been said, so I'm not gonna go into that on Stella and the bond, I agree with all that. But I also, um, asked a lot of members of the community about what they thought, and so some things that I had considered that got back to me, um, were things in terms of any arts curriculum, music and theater, a number of people saying, you know, what can you do to maintain our strong theatrical record, um, and integrate, uh, more of our arts and music to be at that, uh, in terms of the opportunities. And I hear about sustainability, so we need to share programming within the districts.
We asked and we should try on you, number seven, protect.
And, and a look at, um...
Scott, my computer's really good, I'm telling you.
To that, I know the seventh graders, for example, don't have art. I know there's been a lot of questions online about, uh, lack of access to certain musical opportunities because of the schedule, so I don't know if there's an opportunity for you all to come back to the board, but I would love that looked at, and where are opportunities? How can we make sure these kids get that? Cause again, health and wellness, that, having that time for that kid to go to art class, that can be the time that they're able to regroup and regenerate and just chill out. Um, and that is needed, I'll show when it's, the kids are feeling under a lot of stress. Um, so I have others, but you know what, I feel like I've gone off limits.
Thank you. Pepper?
Well, obviously my interest lay in the area of special education and also our ESL students, and, uh, there are some new regulations about not pulling ESL English language students out of the classes to get their instruction with Juliette and Dawn or one of our instructors. And what the state is encouraging people to do is get their ESL extension, which is only four, um, classes, so it's twelve planets. And this way, we don't have to have our ESL teachers pushing into the classroom the way the inclusion teachers for special education push into the classroom. We have had one or two instances where we've had three teachers in one classroom to fulfill that. So I would like to see if all of our teachers understand what best practices are for working with students who are English language learning students. So I think that's good for the students, good for the teachers, good for scheduling, and it's a much more efficient way to operate. So that's, um, expanding the services for those students. And also, as you know, we've started a self-contained classroom, many children have, some have disabilities, and I think we've been very successful this year, but we're continuing to reach that program. And we've been getting inquiries from other school districts that come to see our program. We have one student coming to rent a dance event next year, and, um, we're also working with some autism consultants who are going to be on board for next year, also as consultants for children with developmental disabilities and levels of autism. And thinking about Stella Maris, um, I know from the students that we have, if we were able to work with these students, obviously starting at birth, they'll be three, four and five, because some of their preschool experiences have been somewhat limited, so mediocre, and we really need to start very early with these students, and that would be an ideal place to start. Also a revenue stream, like Katie said, because, uh, they've recently closed some of the preschools, and C D C H has closed, East End Kids in Southampton has closed. We really have very few options out here for preschoolers with disabilities.
So do you see that that could be a magnet from other districts as well? Excellent. Thank you. Jessica?
Um, I also want to see the completion of the 2013 bond project, and also, um, in addition to that, have a plan for new, um, fields in the back. So that could definitely go under psych harbor experience, not just communication. Um, another goal of mine would be to facilitate the coordination of resources for the, um, purchase, repair and renovation of Stella Maris. I'm gonna continue to update the four-year physical plan, and, um, we will be using very conservative projections, uh, when we do update that each year, based on current information and prior year's actual information. Um, I am going to continue the progressive implementation time piece, um, just for enhanced safety, accountability and any cost savings that may be captured. And also with Eric, we are going to, um, work with everyone in the educational school department and all the administrative board to develop a five-year, um, learning plan for our facilities to address all of the, um, recommendations in our building condition survey for. And that's actually going to be the one psych harbor experience or accountability, since we're enhancing the ability for a better experience.
Thank you. Justin?
Hold on, I, I have one more that I emailed you, and I, I forgot to mention, which was, if we want to, um, explore consolidation with the chairman, there's something to consider if we want to explore.
For, uh, revenue, right?
Consolidating the school district.
Right. Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead, Justin.
Hi. Um, a lot of what everyone said is, I think there's a lot of great, um, of great goals and objectives. Um, one I just would add in is to, um, evaluate the cell phone technology policy, and maybe it's even K through 12 at this point, where, um, younger students are coming to school with phones. I know that a lot of, a lot of districts in New York and, you know, other places, uh, they don't allow access to phones during lunch, or, and I would be interested to see, um, the evaluation and see how it affects, uh, social, emotional, academic environment of the school, especially in the middle school, where I know there's a lot of bullying and, you know, social cliques and things going on. Um, so I would just like, you know, it would be great to see it evaluated and, and maybe to develop a, a strong policy that could really be enforced. Um, and then just with the, um, academics and programming, I think it's fantastic to look back to elementary where you could, you know, really examine, um, possible ability grouping in the upper grades to help support the feed to, um, middle school years IV and, uh, also to evaluate, um, kids who aren't doing the IV and how to encourage, uh, maybe a, another track of, you know, vocational or, you know, shared services also with that too. Oh, and professional development, I mean, that's a given, but just, I guess, more, I mean, there's money that, I know, uh, maybe there are more, uh, opportunities for teachers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, a lot of it's already covered. Um, maybe under communication, um, restructuring the committees. Um, yeah, I just, okay, so, uh, so, uh, adheritive policies and ask for reports twice a year to see accomplishments and plans, I don't know, maybe it's already done. Um, and then psych harbor experience, I would put, uh, toxin, commit to a toxin-free environment, um, in terms of the wellness. Um, and then, I think, um, expanding academic and cultural opportunities using shared services to other schools. I'm not sure where that would go under, um, because in, in the mission statement, it says we're committed to creative excellence, and I, um, just love that idea of thinking creatively.
Thank you. Susan?
I don't have anything to add, thanks.
So, I don't know about you, but it did, there's a lot of common themes and repeats that came up, did you notice? So what I would like to do now is exactly what Susan was leading to, is that we all have, in our own minds, in our own ways, in our own roles, a vision of where we'd like to see the school go. And so what we have a tendency to do is think about, well, this is what I can do in my role to get us to that place, right? So, all we have to do as, um, a group is decide, okay, how do we articulate what that big overarching goal is so that we can all do our part to start pointing in the same direction? So, I mean, it seems to me, at least, and I don't wanna speak for everybody, that a lot of the ideas that we were bouncing around fell nicely under, um, one, if not two, if not three, of these broad vision categories that we had, where, um, making sure that we communicate with the public effectively and efficiently and in specific areas, um, and enhancing the psych harbor experience, and for each of us, that may look very different, but, um, it seems like there is a lot of thought and concern around, um, that there is room for improvement to increase, um, increase that. And then also, um, a lot of things, um, a lot of people mentioned vertical alignment with the curriculum, early intervention, um, thinking about how, um, IV can be fit early on from elementary to middle school all the way up. Um, and then also, lots there with Stella Maris. What I'd like you to do is take, um, let's say three minutes, and what I'd like you to do is see if you can see the same, some patterns that kind of point to what it is that we're trying to articulate here. What is it that it's our, our main goal? And I'm thinking we could probably drill it down to, um, three or four, maybe five big goals where some of these objectives that we've talked about will help us reach that goal, and then throughout the year, we can continue to check in and say, these are, this is what I'm doing to get us towards that goal, and this is what I've come up with to get us towards that goal, and these are the benchmarks that I've set to get us towards that goal. Does that make sense? So, um, feel free to brainstorm with a partner, or if you reflect better on your own. Um, I personally reflect better when I'm talking amongst, um, my colleagues, so, um, feel free to turn and talk to a partner and see if you can see, um, the overarching themes that we have up here. I'll give you three minutes to talk.
I'm still sticking with mine.
Oh, it's good. My headliner's.
Good, talk to them.
Well, we did it. It's all there. So it's almost like identity that, because your objective alignment, bond is what it is. Psych harbor sustainability, and strive for psych harbor wellness, forever, but for everybody. And then how do we do that? By creating, you know, you know, it's just insane.
I'm going now, like.
You know, show and tell.
Okay, so this is more objective stuff. Like tasks. We're looking for, like, a broad goal.
You can't, I need a broad girl goal out of that. Communication is a broad goal.
Um, well, you've got a bond project, several, and input up there. Well, communication, a lot with psych harbor experience as well.
Coming through. Maybe in Milwaukee.
Community and appearance.
Right, right, we haven't gotten that, we haven't gotten that, sorry. Um, yeah.
Which is always.
Well, um, I think you have to, you have to identify our base. Remember we said that you, we have to put in context, we have to measure where we are in terms of, you know, and, you know, we lost our baseline. We have to measure ourselves by 2005 standards, and we didn't really have a measure because we ju- we changed our, changed our, our, 2005 was our standard, so now we have a new standard, and now they just...
Same with mine, it's only four.
Because we don't have a baseline to measure.
It's only four.
Now, we start with this year's task and start, start raw.
She's six, so is COVID. Oh, that's not good.
I love you. Sometimes it's shocking. We have, we have a recent, we can start at thirty. That really typically driven by these thoughts. So, so, uh, so what's your new original goal? Try for that.
A lot bigger. Look at those legs. What are we not, what do we do from?
Increase.
Do you get all of them for everybody? Stella and the bond are like, that's part of it. What did you do, right guy? Let me see yours.
They just do.
K through twelve alignment, go, go under that. They can go under it though, we're doing less, less than more in school.
I got nothing.
These are all.
I don't know, I don't know why we can wreck the scene. No, I don't think so. There's nobody.
What?
No.
Oh, it was beautiful. I said, I told him I got upset when Lori's mom, Lori's dad spoke.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. I couldn't leave the freaks.
I went to the funeral, it was gorgeous. I thought everyone that spoke was so elegant, so Evan did an amazing job. That's when I started.
Uh, fist of five, how much more time do you need? I feel like I need, like, two more minutes. How much more time do you guys need? Give me some fingers.
We're done.
You guys are done?
It was a beautiful service.
I'll give you two more minutes. I just want to.
Yes. Oh, Striper. She was very profound.
If I die, you can talk at my funeral, can't you, babe?
Help me?
Yeah.
I will. Leave me held.
You gotta, you gotta come to some baseball game today.
I will.
Ask Jeff if you ever seen him. Hey, boss, how many times have you seen him?
I can't believe Billy Beak was that. Twenty-five days. Billy Beak. Billy Beak. Pancreatic.
Well, pancreatitis is really terrible.
Twenty-five days.
She had three red, she had twins that had a red hat and she had one in Nicholas's class that was a red hat. Three girls. She had twins and then, uh.
Yeah, she read a letter that she did in Maria's class, Jeff. Like, an appreciation letter. Yeah. Yeah, 'cause Charlotte couldn't get up. But that was expected.
I'm curious what you guys came up with, and this time instead of, um, going around the table, I, I would like just a volunteer of somebody who feels like they really managed to articulate some sort of overarching theme that they feel good about that, that everybody can work towards. Just got something that they like. Okay.
I do.
No idea.
I do. I, I need the language around it, but I really do, I, I feel there's a power in words and so sustainability, communication, wellness and, and, um, the academic standards. So, it's like strive for Seg Harbor Sustainability, strive for communication, then under it, you have all your objectives.
Right, right, right.
Right? So, strive for Seg Harbor Sustainability, you know, boom, 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 and then strive for Seg Harbor's highest level of communication, strive for wellness for every, you know, child, adult, community, and then under it, you have like your targeted programs like, you know, home middle school program would absolutely, connectedness is one of the essential factors you have to have for to keep children from using drugs. So, connectedness by having incremental, you know, activities, you're gonna have it, but that's an objective. And then strive for, and that, I can't get, I can't wordsmith this one, but, um, highest o- optimal academic standards for each child that are measured, you know, like, so that we're measuring that we're doing a good job. We, we, our, our standards crashed and burned in two thousand and five. We can't measure them now because we have the opt-out, but that's coming around again, like, you know, like the song, it's coming around again. And so, w- we've got that coming back because I think parents are gonna stop opting out because Pearson's out, um, we've got Questar in, we have teachers developing the tests now, so I think parents are gonna develop, their trust level's gonna come back and we're gonna be able to have teachers back at the table again. So, I think we're gonna have a level. We have regents exams, so we have, we have ways to measure again. So, am I making sense? Anybody can jump in at this point.
Well, and.
I, I, I had a threshold going for a minute there.
Well, but, but you, you did manage to pinpoint some of the, the common threads that are coming through.
Sustainability.
Wellness came up quite a bit, um, Stella came up quite a bit. Did, did you guys find a way to kind of articulate?
I would, I would say, uh, thoroughly examine Stella, uh, on all levels in terms of usage, sustainability.
That could just be resources.
Sort of.
Um, usage, sustainability of programming, and I think we should also add in, um, something about how we communicate that or engage the public, um, in that process, right? Would, is that? Uh, what else? The part.
What about, um, create a model educational environment for the whole child?
I like that. So, I'm gonna put out where we have wellness, right?
You see, that's an overarching goal as opposed to these things that are objectives.
That is.
Um, overarching does not have to be measurable and then you have objectives of it.
Right, objectives.
But you could, there are ways you can measure it.
Oh, for sure.
The other thing that I.
Wait, you need to tell me it again, 'cause I'm gonna read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, create a model educational environment for the whole child.
Yeah.
And despite Tom crazy, I agree with Katie that words matter. I would just love to see somewhere, I don't know where it'll end up, in the overarching goal language, if the word inspire or inspiring is in there. Because I think there's a lot of important things in programs that actually got mentioned by people tonight that come under that and I just think that's a good large vision goal, that we inspire children, we're inspiring families, we're inspiring people.
Well, and I, and I like that for, um, the theme that I heard over and over again, which I actually didn't expect to hear tonight, it was kind of a surprise, was this vertical piece, right? The, the connecting of what we're doing in the elementary school to the middle school to the high school and I, I think that we could all benefit from more vertical conversations and we don't have to decide tonight what that looks like, but that being inspirational of, you know, do the fifth grade teachers know what's expected of kids when they get to seventh, because I think they'd be surprised, right? So, I, I think.
That, that, that goal, that goal was brought up like probably four or five years ago. It was called building the bridge. So, um, yeah, that was, that was what we called that, was building a bridge. So, I, I mean, I think it should, it's something that is a constant in our, in our year-to-year. I don't think it's something new that just came up. We've been, that's been an ongoing thing for us. And with curriculum changing the way it does, it, it will always be ongoing for us.
And, and.
But it's not new. It's not new to me.
I agree with that. But I, I think that what I'm hearing tonight is that people feel like it could use a revisit and maybe perhaps some more focus.
I would have to ask the administrators if they felt that way, 'cause I don't, I don't, I.
Right.
I don't think it's something with us.
Don't the concur outcomes, I mean, understanding how the.
Yes. That's what I'm saying, yeah. You guys do this. Yeah. Right. And, and at your, I'm gonna assume at your cabinet meetings, the superintendent brings that up on a, you know, yeah, like Matt just said, a regular basis, so.
Well, and I, I think that this goal would address, um, the middle years program, right, as far as vertical alignment, as well as, um, early intervention, right? And it would also get to, um, curriculum issues that came up, having that vertical alignment, or increasing, um, participation in IV, right? So, if, if kids are having experiences early on that might mirror what they might see later on, then they wouldn't be so overwhelmed when they reach there. So, I, I, um, I like that. I think that's, that's, uh, getting there. Other ones that we saw, what else has anyone written up? Yeah?
I, the three overarching goals that I see could kind of like encompass all of this, it would have to be, um, be built around sustainability, improvement and enhancement, and it would be to, it would be to sustain, improve and enhance our facilities, um, also maintain physical stability and accountability, and al- and also to, um, sustain, improve, enhance all of our school programs and we, just to take some language, um, you know, in education climate, we wanna make sure all students are college and career ready.
Right. Okay, you have to talk slower. So, stable, improved and enhanced.
Well, I think, yes, sustain, improve, enhance are like my three main words.
Yeah.
And it should be building, it should, all facilities, it should, um, financial, we should be doing that, uh, fiscal stability and accountability, so we need to sustain and, uh, enhance all of, you know, our fiscal part of, of this business, I think we should say. And then programs, student programs, sustain, improve, enhance student programs to make sure all of our students are college and career ready.
One more.
Can I just ask a question about that, um, in terms of the, what you have on increased, uh, academic standards and Jeff earlier mentioned the issue with the number of kids. Were you afraid, does that just this year or every year, we see a certain handful who are not graduating, okay?
Well, I, I think you, you look for patterns just because in a sample size, uh, similar what we have, you can have statistical anomalies. So, if over three or four years, you see a pattern emerging, then it's time to dig in. So, I would say the last three or four years, despite steps, we have a handful of students every year, um, the last three or four years who are not graduating, whereas maybe the five years preceding that, it might've been zero or one. So, there's starting to be a pattern.
So, what, I mean, I hear, you know, what do we do in a situation in terms of, um, vocational trainings? And isn't that sort of gone by the wayside and perp on the corner or do we still?
No, there's a, there's a, there's an occupational education program that, um, we send between six and maybe thirteen kids out of a class of seventy-five a year or two, and that's run out of BOCs. Um, they can access that program beginning in eleventh grade and because of, um, I guess sustainable, sustainability concerns, each school doesn't run their own program, they send them to a regional center. So, that's why we access BOCs out of Riverhead or Belkport or whatever, wherever the program is. Um, but despite that, there are kids who are on the academic track who for a variety of reasons, um, are not reaching the finish line. Uh, and, you know, it's a handful, but I think we could be perhaps, um, even more proactive than we already are and maybe a little more heavy-handed in terms of some of the steps we take with those kids and their families in trying to get them to the finish line.
Well, what do you feel like is missing then in terms of language? 'Cause I feel like there's always, I, everything I see come out of school is always about the second accountability, success, the college and career ready, it's what I always hear. And, uh, I, well, I guess, I guess the way I interpret is always college ready, so, i- if we are not doing those programs, what is it that you would like to see or what is it, it could be a goal that we could be doing that would, in other words, how could you, could you articulate something to make sure that we capture that issue?
Capture the issue of the, of the.
Helping, making sure that we're working to help the kids that you highlighted earlier.
Be more heavy-handed with the parents and the child. That we early intervention define as an issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's also the alternate pathway program. Have we had students that, that have taken advantage of that, that the state offered?
Not in earnest yet. I think that the, the, the crux of the issue with the, the population I'm talking about for the most part is a, is, um, a lack of effort, but if you peel that layer away, that lack of effort comes from very complicating factors. So, at the end of the day, there's no one answer, it's probably a, a group of answers in terms of just being more involved with the kids. I almost think that, you know, I've done some reading about it, that early on, maybe in the fall, when we have an idea of who these kids are and you almost assign like an adult advocate to the family and the child that follows that kid or that student, um, for a period of time. Uh, those are just some.
I think there's trying to be some indicators that help you flag who that student is earlier rather than later, you know what I mean? Like, um, before, when you can have more of an impact, like it might even be in middle school or something, you know?
Yeah, you'd like to think that's the case and sometimes it is.
Look at Brittany. Uh-uh.
Well, I think, I actually think it, I think actually sometimes when we have the meetings from the transition, there's a lot of kids that you're like, they're doing great and we're, they were terrorists in middle, like, it just depends on the kid. Um, there's a big tra- like, middle school's a tumultuous time, your hormones are raging, so it's, some kids do really well and then they fall apart in high school and it's vice versa, so I don't think they could be flagged. I remember Barbara and I talking about it, 'cause she was the former AP saying, "That kid was great in middle school and then they fell apart in high school and vice versa." So, it's, we'd love to say, to flag it, but sometimes it doesn't happen.
I mean, I think that at the end of the day, the, the, what we've done historically, at least for the time that I've been in Seg Harbor, is really involve the family and make them aware of the jeopardy that the, the student is in. But I think doing that is not sufficient. Uh, and doing that and then making some counseling services available is not sufficient. Uh, at least the evidence would suggest it's not sufficient. So, we've gotta think long and hard about being more proactive, uh, and maybe coordinating services, uh, more thoughtfully with the kids. Um, beginning, I, I think the timeline in terms of when we tap into it, we're, we're on target with that, beginning with meeting with kids in their senior year in October and that's when we start, you know, with kids who, up until that point, are not, um, experiencing the success needed to graduate. But I think some of the steps we need to take need to be more thoughtful. So, the, the goal is to come up with a plan and put it to paper and then run it and see how it goes.
Something, something a little related to that is I know that graduation is the finish line, but maybe because I have a daughter who's recently graduated in college, another one going in, I, and a little bit of brought into parents in the communities where their children went to college and just couldn't succeed and left after a semester, two, or two semesters. Um, sometimes it's, it's financial, but many times it's not. And I know it's hard to get more than, any little information about it, but if there's a way that we can somehow institutionalize tracking them through to that next phase and seeing what our fail and bail rate is in some capacity and being able to, to reflect on, are there building blocks that we may want to shift or put in place so that there's, we may have a higher degree of success in the next phase? I know that's harder to do because once you leave, leave our nest, it's hard to even track it, but I think some other school districts have, have been able to tackle it and I, I, um, for me, that graduation point is the beginning and having prepared them, whether it's career, you know, the career is a little different to track, but at least for college, you know, if they are on the track for college, do we have a higher percentage that don't go through than, than our aspirational peers or our peers right now? So, I'd love to see that be a component of how we're thinking about success. If that makes sense.
Does.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna ask for your help right now. Um, we've got four kind of summarized here, just help me look at your goals and your priorities. The things that are important to you and what you see and what you want to accomplish, um, are these, are they articulated in these four? And if you can't read my hand writing, I'll read them.
Well, we're looking at having broad goals or, I mean, I, I thought that our goals, and maybe this is taxed under it, but we've always had things that we kind of measure and, and, and plan out. So, is the goal of this meeting just to have general ones and then we're gonna come back with more specific ones that are measurable? Or are we looking to devote?
Um, we're, we're not gonna put timelines and, and objectives and all that together in one night. Um, my thought is that for, um, the administrators that already have things in mind, we'll just ask for what those ta- timelines might be. Can you articulate it and let us know how we, how you're achieving these goals? Um, for those that are not administrator-based, um, maybe tomorrow night we can revisit, um, our committee structure. Do, is this something that committees can help us come up with a timeline and a policy? Is it a policy issue? Do we need to implement a new policy? Do we need to look at the wellness policies? Do we need to give a task to a committee to help us come up with, um, timelines and specific objectives to meet that goal? Because I think that those conversations, um, with a group this size in one evening is, is, um, probably not as effective as, hey, those who are super interested in this particular goal, um, let, let's put a committee together and, and figure out how we're gonna achieve that goal and then have that be our process for reporting that.
Can I say communication, though, built. Can I say communication though built out a little bit more? I mean, what I have here is maximize parent and community partnerships. And, and that could be the overlying goal on the objectives of Stella Maris, the Bond Project, academic goals, wellness, plastic turf.
Yep.
Just figured I'd get a rise. Um.
What does that say?
Maximize parent and community partnerships.
But I, I would kind of put that under a communication.
Yeah, and I, and I think that this particular one could be, um, the sub-goal for all the other goals. Like, how did you involve parents in this process? How did you involve parents in this process? How did you involve parents in this process? How did you communicate that to parents? How did you communicate to parents your wellness or your community or your, um?
Diane, in those four categories, where would you see extending, um, both cultural or academic opportunities?
So cultural would be Sac Harbor Experience, right? So you feel like those are, create a model educational environment for the whole child?
Okay, so you think shared services and addressing music stuff would be that?
That's definitely whole child, in my opinion. I mean, if you disagree, we can change the language.
So, so the four sentences up there, I think would be any year, right?
I'm sorry?
I'm just trying to understand how, this is a little different approach than we've done. And I'm just trying to figure out, like, those would be, like, every year you'd wanna do those. Stella's very specific, but the rest of them would be every year, right? Are there years when we wouldn't wanna do those? Cause usually when you have goals, you want them to be specific enough that they're not just, you do it every year.
Right, but the problem is you can't do everything every year. And so I, what I'm hearing from the group is that this year, these are the types of things that we would like to focus on. And this is, this is, this is why. Like, have I summarized the why this is what we want to focus on well enough that we all kind of have the same mission?
So, for example, wellness this year, you know, this is my third year. Wellness resonated this year because this was a, at least for, I, I speak for my cabinet, this was a hard year. This was a hard year wellness-wise and taking care of each other, to be able to take care of our staff, to be able to take care of our faculty, because we saw, we lost so many members of our, our, our families and our community. We lost a child this year, we lost so much. And there's no doubt that wellness suddenly resonated. And, you know, like, even the discussions over the turf field brought home wellness. What we, it, it, you just, it was like a symphony. You heard, a cacophony is a de- better word, um, in how we had to, we got through this year, but we have to take very good care of each other. And then we had things like, that were really joyful, like the, the gardens and, you know, people coming together in really nice ways. So I, I don't know if like, you know, when I first started here, if that was as, as big a deal as it, and how meaningful it is right now at both schools. You know, we were just trying to get the community coalition going, and now we have a grant, now we have reasons now, you know? So I, I think that, that shifted the language. And I, and I think that in the past, we have done everything, every goal, as, as, we've done a goal and an objective almost synergistically, where it really should be an overriding goal that underneath it, you have all the tasks or all the objectives underneath it. That we could really parlay out, out to, like, Mike's gonna take that ball and run with it. And he could be the one, rather than me standing up here, he could be the one reporting out on all the accomplishments of IB that he measures out and says, this is what, you guys, I can get this done. And I can tell you when I'm, and he can report out to us twice during the year, here's how I'm doing with this, you know? And here's maybe the blocks to getting X number of children to join IB. And here's how I'm gonna dial it back to the elementary, and these are the strategic moves I've made to dial it back, so we're speaking the same language. And, and this is what I'm gonna get, get accomplished. But you know what? I can't get all these blocks done this year, but here's my two-year plan for it at the end of the year that he'll share with us. You know, I, I don't know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, right?
So then they, so then what the, the things are under here, we agree to as a team?
Yeah.
So, so we kind of have to focus, decide what we focus on here?
Well, and, and, and that's, that's kind of what, what we heard here, is, is we heard, um, social and emotional come up several times, right? And we heard, um, drug and alcohol prevention come up several times. We heard, um, having some sense of community and identity in, um, the athletic program as well as the middle school program. And so, you know, the objective that Brittany might have, like, she'll set her own goals for herself of how she wants to, um, educate the whole child and, and maybe.
Right, but I'm just saying that the goals that historically in the district we have, that are the ones that are measured, we get updates on and are measurable, aren't identified by an individual administrator on their own that they just put on here. It's agreed upon as a group, but that gets to this list that gets measured and reported on. So I just want to clarify the process.
I, I think we're trying to broaden that this year, from what I could tell. We're trying to incorporate everybody's, uh, ideas and then come up with the main topic that then will s- get subdivided. And maybe under, uh, wellness, it is Mike's specific goals on when he rolls out his IB and how he does it.
But, no, no, I, I understand the thought way over here.
So, but then you, but, but, okay, so then you let him report how he's doing as he goes along.
I'm not talking about who's reporting. What I'm saying is the subsets, you know, what comes in the second column that then has a date and, and a deliverable is, is something that we work on as a, as a group to decide what gets on that list. It's not individuals just deciding, okay, here's the three that I'm putting on here. That the process in goal setting has always been that as a team, we agree on that column.
Well, they might, maybe we'll let the administrators put them themselves this year.
I think you're getting there by saying this, this is, the, the big brands are, are, are migrating over. We're hearing, well, I'm putting sustainability up there. I'm putting it up there because I, I have that depression era thinking all the time is, can we afford it? Can we afford it? Can we afford it?
The budget is always, is always there. And so, um, and I, I agree that with, with some of these things, you know, we always want to stay within the tax cap. And we always want, and we always want to make sure that we educate the children. But I, I think what the purpose of this is more towards, I, I'm hearing common threads that resonate with, um, administrators and board members. And, um, th- these are common goals that we can get around. And then as, um, we start to achieve the individual objectives that, um, that we have listed here. But I, I'm not, I don't know that we as a table need to drill down, um, you know, tonight, let's decide on this date and that time and, and that sort of thing. But I would be interested in, um, action plans and timelines kind of like Jeff described. Come up with a plan, put it on paper, try it, measure it, um, and I trust that the administration can do that.
So Diane, last year we had three overarching visions, and those are broke, broken out into, I think, sixteen different goals. And then we put timelines on them. Is that, is that what we want to do this year?
I, I think sixteen.
No, it was way too many.
Not sixteen, but we wanna have, as a group, agree what those key, because you can have, at any given year, you can have that broad title. We have to a- agree that there are things under that that become the priority. That's where the, that's really where your action is and where your, where your measurable deliverable is.
Okay. I think that you've made your position very, very clear. I feel that that is the way that we should go.
No, I was just responding to, to Tom Johnson.
Yeah, I understand. But I think that, um, what we're gonna do this year is just keep, um, a broad vision and broad goal. Because the, um, the board is, um, there's, there's something I saw several times this week is that when there is a fire, the board members aren't on the ground fighting fire. They are up above in a helicopter, looking at the broad vision, looking at the direction that things are going, and, um, providing guidance and oversight. And we let the administrative team, um, fight fires. So they're the ones with the boots on the ground, and they're the ones that are doing the day-to-day. And so when they report to us with, you know, we, we see your goals, these are the objectives that we're going to set to meet those goals. And this is when we plan on meeting them, and then they update us at the end of the month.
And I even think it could go a step further on the committees that we put together. Because in our board meetings where we have reports from the separate committees, instead of having the board members report on those committees, it would be nice if maybe the committees appointed a person to be their spokesperson to come, which will increase attendance at board meetings and communication, and that they can tell us what's going on.
So what I was, Mike, um, per now, is, um, now that we've kind of put some thought around this, I'm not necessarily married to this language. I'm gonna let you guys, um, think about it, reflect on it, take a picture of it with your phone. Go ahead, Diane.
Sorry, I just have to throw something in there before you finish up. A couple, uh, words that I really like are inspire and encourage. And I was thinking of the middle school years, and I had spoken to someone, and I like, it's not ADD, it's MDD, motivational deficit disorder. And I think it's a, um, you know, a broader idea of inspiring and encouraging the child. And also, I didn't hear any mention tonight of teachers. And they're like such a huge part of that. And I never see them at board meetings, I don't see them at PTA meetings. And if there's some way we can have that as a goal to, um, get the teachers more involved with this whole parent community, parent, community, teacher thing. So I just wanted to add that.
I just, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding. So again, I'll go back to the Zevon R. I'm talking this back, sorry, I'm ready.
No, go for it.
And, uh, and so, um, they talked, they did, uh, talk about how the, the goals that the board should determine to identify no more than, you know, sort of overarching, then we subdivision, then we should be pushing it. But then there was also a discussion about these SMART goals and objectives that are part of this, there's specifics. And, um, I, I guess my concern, and maybe this is your point, and, um, I, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, I agree, that don't we, or is that gonna take place tomorrow? Well, we'll have a discussion on some of those. So for example, no offense, but I think if we just had overarching flowery language and we didn't include starting school later, no offense, but my guess is that would never happen. And so I think that, that it is the board's role to push and encourage and say, you know what? It's not, may not be easy, but it is what is data-driven and proven for kids' health and wellness, and we want to see this objective. So is that fair to say that those are things that we should be?
Once again, brief reminder. So, um, what I'd like, um, for tomorrow is there is, um, some of this work should be done in committee. Some of this work should be done with administrators, some of this work should be done in different places. I know that the wellness committee last year, um, completely revamped the policy and had lots of goals in it, including, um, having, uh, implementing a drug and alcohol, uh, prevention program or.
Cell phones or later starts or all that stuff.
All these sorts of things will become policy if they're our goal. And so the way that we, we make policy, I mean, that's our, our job, is to have, um, the committee bring us a policy, and then we vote on it and adopt it. That's, that's how action gets taken, so.
The only problem, how is, is that a lot of these things have gone to committee, i.e. cell phone policy. Jeff spent an entire year with middle school and high school parents. They came back, they gave us the recommendation, the board voted on it. There's a percentage of parents who are not happy, so we're gonna revisit it again. So we just need to make sure that, that we're not re, redoing what we've already done. You know, like rewriting the wellness policy again this year. So you get another person there, they don't want to talk about that. They want to talk about, it's like, the direction cannot continue to just grow off trees. And if it doesn't suit somebody's answers, then we just bring, keep bringing it back to the table. At some point, you're gonna say, it's in there, it's done, it's, let's move on.
And I agree, and I think that has everything to do with communication, right?
I don't, no, I don't think it's, I think it's at a board meeting, it's on videotape, you hear it, it's processed, it's processed, it's policy, it's accepted, it's it. I mean, if, the cell phone policy was adopted less than a year ago, we're saying we're gonna, you know, let's revisit it again, let's. So I just think we just need to be careful on what we're going to be revisiting over and over and over again. Because that's when you get people, board members, public community of like, okay, we've already done this, we're doing it again, like, I.
But I, I, you know, and I don't want an answer to this, but if someone asked me why we only moved the start time by ten minutes? I don't know if everybody would have a clear answer. I don't, I'm not looking for the answer or what the committee said. It wasn't communicated properly. So there are things that need to get revisited and communicated better as to why it can't happen. Everybody on Facebook thought the greatest thing they ever saw was walking into a classroom and having a mail slot with everybody's name on it and depositing your phone as you walked in in that mail slot. Everybody in this room saw it on Facebook, thought it was a great idea. That could be a new policy.
So I'm gonna ask you tonight to reflect on, um, how you see your, these objectives that we've listed, um, how do we make them actionable, right? Going back to SMART. How do we make the objectives actionable and, um, timeline, if that's something that you'd like? And if we need to revisit the verbiage on the goals, we're certainly open to that. And tomorrow, maybe we look at, um, how we make these goals actionable. Is it through committees? Is it through administration? I'll just give you some time to think on that tonight, and we will reconvene tomorrow night. Uh, any questions on what I am hoping that you'll do?
And we'll take a look at our policies to see which ones exist in our policies. And we can have that discussion tomorrow, it's a good point. You know, like, we do have policies on, you know, a lot of this.
Okay.
Come back here.
All right. I think I need to make a motion. I need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This was Sandy.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know why we can't stand you, I have to get your pass.
So yesterday, we had a chance to, um, kind of gather around everybody's thoughts about how they'd like to spend some time next year, what their priorities were, and really just kind of tease out of that, how that connects with our larger vision of communication, developing a positive Sac Harbor experience and how accountability begets success. We had, um, kind of narrowed it down to, um, four main goals. And, um, we just jotted these down, they can be wordsmithed, they can be tweaked, um, we can make adjustments to these. But tonight, um, my priority actually is to figure out, okay, which of these tasks will best support these goals? What are our priorities? Not to say that, um, we can't try to do all of these things, or we might do some things that aren't even up here, but which are the ones that we really want to pay attention to, to make sure that they get done? Because those are the ones we're gonna measure, and those are the ones that we're gonna ask to, um, report back on and say, okay, this is, this is gonna be my number one focus. I'm also gonna do this and that and the other and all my other, you know, daily things. But this is the one where I want to report back to the board and say, this is how I'm coming on this, these are the obstacles that I see. This is, um, my, my timeline and, and that sort of thing. So hopefully you've had a chance to reflect on that, um, a little bit today. I know I have. What I've decided to do is just kind of start with a template, and I'll pass this around. Maybe I'll pass it around to see if I'm, that one says it that way. So, um, on this template, I'll just give this. So, one, two, three, these are the, um, broad vision goals. Everything seemed to fit nicely to that. We had other over here, but everything kind of fit nicely into the vision. Um, and I just put the full verbiage there, increase communication and become engaged, build, share, structure, right? So those are my three big focuses up here. Underneath that, I put, um, this particular, maximize parent and community partnerships. Now, just for an example, um, when I was reflecting on this goal, um, I thought, eh, maximize is hard to judge. Increase is a little bit easier to judge. And then I gave it a little bit of specificity by saying by enhancing digital communication, because I was thinking about what Scott said about, um, reducing paper and increasing digital collaboration. So I just gave this goal a little bit of specificity. So that's really the only one I played with, and I want you to take a red pen to it, right? I want you to take these big goals, and if they don't quite say, um, they're not specific enough, or if they aren't hitting enough and you want it to be more specific, feel free to take a red pen to them. And then underneath, I just have an example. We can cross it out, I just wanted to give you something concrete. Um, we can cross it out, I just wanted to give you something concrete to look at, to see, um, what I had in mind. So, an example of a way we might do that is create some standard expectation of timeline to reply to parents. And then I have, right? That doesn't have to be a priority, but I just wanted you to see what I'm talking about. That what I'd like to do tonight is put you in, um, small, clavicle groups. Go through here and look at our list, because there were so many that resonated with everybody, and just say, okay, yes, we can, we'll, we'll get to a lot of those, but what are the most important pieces? So, when we think about communication and maximizing parent and community partnerships, what's gonna be the one thing that we can do that's tangible and measurable? I know a lot of you are familiar with the acronym of SMART. Um, what's one thing that we could do that would help us know that we've achieved that goal? And that task may even be, how do we measure that, right? So, maybe it's, um, an opinion survey that we, we do annually so that we know that we're making progress in that area, right? So, um, this part is really open, but I really want you to focus on prioritizing something that we can check off, that got done, let's make sure that gets done. And then all these other things that at the building level or as at the individual level for administrators, I'm gonna do this, that, and the other as well, but this is the thing that we're really gonna have our eye on to make sure that it gets done. So, um, I had, I had put the, um, wellness goal that we had, had mentioned again. Take your red pen to it, let's phrase it how you want. I put that under the SAG Harbor Experience. Um, I put, uh, the academic performance one with a vertical piece. Um, I put that under the accountability. And then if you turn it over, um, this is the one that Jennifer was talking about, improve and enhance building programs with an eye on physical sustainability. Um, again, if you wanna phrase that a little bit differently, that's why I put a line underneath it, if you wanna rephrase it, but we kinda have the goal, um, around that one. And then, the last one's the big one. This one may require more tasks and this is going to be kind of the brainstorming one, because this is the Stellamaris piece, right? And the Bond Project piece. And how do we communicate that with parents and the community? And how do we get them involved? And, you know, maybe one of those tasks is creating a timeline project. Maybe it's, um, involving the community in the developmental process. Um, we're, we're open, right? So, lines for you guys to kind of put your heads together and brainstorm a little bit. Um, and because we sit with people that we normally work with and I think that it's beneficial to bounce ideas off people that we don't normally talk to, um, I'm gonna mix you up a little bit, if that's okay. So, um, I'm just simply gonna do a little count off and you can go to any part of the library. I'll give you about thirty minutes to kind of flesh out some, um, priorities. When we come together at the end, we'll kind of see what we came up with. And my hope is that we don't have sixteen goals that we're gonna be tracking all year. We can definitely do all sixteen things, but these are the five that we're gonna make sure get done. And then, you know, if other stuff gets done as well, that's fantastic. But then if opportunities arise, we're not so bogged down in fifty thousand tasks that we've got time and energy to focus on those things. Does that make sense? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Because yesterday, there's so many great things that on the board. I don't know if I understood from the administrators, uh, particularly the building level administrators, they're so close to student achievement, or where you feel that we're the most fragile or, um, that we wanna make sure that we have some additional area to focus on. And maybe I missed that, but because of, the list is so long, but I would might wanna make sure that that gets on my priority list. Because obviously that's a place where, you know, we wouldn't wanna overlook it.
And I, I agree a hundred percent. And I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, I know that there's a lot of data that comes in at the end of summer. And maybe when they've had a chance to analyze that, um, thing, so may, maybe the academic piece, right? Maybe we ask for those SMART goals, um, after they've had a chance to analyze.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if they know anything now, I just would like, if they, if they don't have anything now, then it makes sense to wait, I just, that's why I was asking them the question.
We have some preliminary data, yeah.
Is there anything that you think was...
Well, they're, they're not all that new. I mean, the math, when you look at the disciplines, uh, math, science, social studies, and English, um, math is, uh, not on par with the other three disciplines in terms of comparative data versus districts similar to ours or districts that are located on the east end. So, where we might be in the top twenty percent or top ten percent actually in social studies, English, and science, and math, we're like in the sixtieth or seventieth percentile.
So, that's an area where we still wanna make sure that we, they have a laser focus on.
Yeah. Which, which, which was identified as a goal yesterday.
Right. Yeah, because there's so many, I wasn't sure.
And you had mentioned yesterday also, on, in other areas, I think you're talking about the kids who are, they have some adult syndrome, about how you've tried some things and it's time to try some new things or... Just so I kept, I'm curious out of the math, I know that one of the things you guys adopted in recent years was doubling up on math in the sixth grade and the seventh graders have, period and half. I've read stuff that that's not always the way to go. Is there, is, a, a, as you looked at what you, the approach you took, is, is, is it time yet to try a different approach or is it not yet time?
I would say the preliminary data at the middle level would suggest that that move was very successful. And that longitudinally, we don't have enough time yet to assess what the, the impact would be four or five years out. But the results, like last year, we were identified by New York State as a gap closing school, basically because, and a lot of it has to do with Ms. Miuridis, but the scores went up very, very much so at the sixth grade and seventh grade level. And probably, in addition to her efforts, the primary reason was increased instructional time. You know, there's downside to that, which we talked about yesterday, which is, um, not having art in the seventh grade. But we tried to view that within the context of what, what is typical for a six, seven, eight sequence in terms of total amount of art time. And when viewed in that light, we're still, our students still have quite a lot, but still a legitimate concern. And then the last comment about the high, the, the graduating senior comment, and I didn't get into great detail last night, I think that big picture, what, what, it, let's say that eighty percent of the kids who don't graduate, don't graduate because they have not, it, it's not because they haven't passed a required New York State Regents exam. Only twenty percent of the kids roughly are in that boat. And those are kids who are, who've come to our country from another country and are having problems mastering the language in addition to the content. And there's not much we can do about that beyond what we are doing now. The eighty percent of the kids who are not getting by because they're not passing required courses, like economics and government and those kinds of things, that's really, uh, an effort issue. And in the past, maybe up until three or four years ago, meeting with the parents and such was sufficient to get the effort that you needed. What I've learned over the last couple of years is, it's no longer the case. So, I think that we have to become more proactive, whether it's a Saturday academy for these kids, but basically handholding them and saying, hey, this is what you need to do and being more heavy-handed in how we approach that. So, that, I didn't say it very clearly yesterday, but I think that's, that's where we're at.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Um, I, and I anticipate with some of these goals, um, some people might have, um, a lot of really good ideas of, um, very SMART-oriented, task-oriented ways to support a goal. Whereas in other areas, they, they may wanna leave that up to other groups. But, um, I think at the end, when we call the group, we'll know, these are our, our big priorities. And yes, of course, we can do as much as we can in, in these other ones, but these are the ones we wanna make sure get done this year. Alright, so, um, you're one, you're two, it's like playing duck, duck, goose. Three, four, five.
One.
One, two.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Five. One, two, three, four, five. Alright, so, ones find each other, find a corner in the room. Twos find each other, find a corner in the room. Do you guys have any questions on what I'm asking you to do for the next thirty minutes?
We'll find you.
Nope.
Okay.
Alright, so thirty minutes.
Four, Barbara.
I'm working my mic.
Four, her even.
We had Susan on. Do we do a tree?
I, I hope it's okay.
Okay, we'll finish.
I noticed that, um, there was a pretty good balance of, um, administrators and board members in the groups. So, um, if it's alright, uh, in those groups, um, if I could hear from one of either the, um, building leaders or district leaders from that group to just share back what you discussed. Um, let's start with, um, maybe we'll do the phrasing of the goals first, because I saw some of you had taken a red pen to the goals themselves.
I have the notes, right?
This is a test, you remember.
You just give me a prompt and I'll be able to go.
Alright, I'll, I'll just do a little silently.
Yeah.
Um, the, the first goal were, uh, it says, increase parent community partnerships by enhancing digital communication. Um, group one, who's in group one? Did you guys, um, rephrase that goal? Did you feel term that up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Digital, we decided it should be a two-way communication, that there needs to be a mechanism when parent is notified of something to have a person to go back to as a follow-up or, uh, not a person, but, you know, a, a response that they can apply to and get an answer or follow-up. That's how we, we go to...
I like that addition of two-way, as in, instead of digital. Um, group two, did you change, how, what were your thoughts on wording? Where's group two? We don't remember.
We are.
No, it's me, Jeff.
Oh, I thought we were...
No, I'm sorry. I'm fine, I'm... I know that.
You didn't like me quizzed on your group number there, I shouldn't give you all my names out. That's not...
We didn't wordsmith how it was written.
No.
Okay. Uh, group three, well, uh, maybe we'll just, anybody else wordsmith the first goal?
We didn't.
We, we didn't wordsmith it, all I will tell you is that, but we didn't even deal with that one and I said that I didn't like it, just, um...
Do you like it better if it says two-way instead of one-way?
Yeah, but I just, I guess I didn't understand the point of this one. So, I, I don't wanna put it back to square one, but, so we just focused on other goals.
Well, and I did notice that as we went around, which is what I would hope happened, is people that felt passionately in one area spent a lot of time discussing that area and may not have discussed too much other areas that they're not so passionate about, which is good, because then we kind of have picked on those.
So, why don't we though, do you, are you gonna get into the tasks with regard to that goal?
And I was just thinking about what order would be most efficient, right? So, I think if, if we could, if we're all happy with the language, um, then let's just move on to the tasks. And, but the other thing that I noticed, which I don't wanna get too hung up on, is some tasks could go in a million different places because it ties back to communication and it ties back to this and it ties back to that. So, I, I just don't wanna let that, that detail, where we stick it, hang us up. I, I'm more interested in, let's just get the tasks and then, as long as we know what the tasks are, I think we'll be, we'll be good.
A procedural question, I was a little confused, because each section, there was something next to one and then it said a goal and need. So, did that mean that the sentence on top was not the goal, but what was next to goal was goal? And the sentence on top was just directional? It was unclear to me what, what this meant.
So, the one, two, and three stem from, hang on, I forgot, right?
Sorry.
This, like, just to refer back to how we've done it in the past. So, yeah, these are three big statements. And then, underneath that, there was, you know, a goal and then several tasks that were related to the vision.
So, so then you're, so then we kind of, I guess, decided that what's next to goal would now be a goal instead of anything about it, correct?
Just keep...
These are tasks. Well, it's not written like a vision.
No, I, I know, I, I just went off what we had been using a lot of speakers, I didn't wanna completely...
Maybe that's language is what, that's probably part of the problem.
Yeah, no, I understand, we're using different words for different things. Yep, and I totally get that. Um, so, increase parent communication by, and community, thank you. Actually, um, can I just describe? Anybody willing to describe?
I'll be smearing everything on the lefty.
Jennifer.
I'm just being honest.
She's the finance lady, she's good at this stuff.
You can, you can do it here, I'm, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be here. I just feel like if we all wait for me to write...
It will take too long.
It'll take too long. Yeah, 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 yeah. So, uh, just cross out digital and put, um...
Two-way.
Two-way. She's got one. Yep. Are you comfortable with that, Barbara? Thank you. Um, so, let's talk about tasks. Um, what tasks did we come up with for this one?
Yeah, um, one of the discussions involved the community, the committees and having parents play a more active role in the, by assigning them a task of maybe, um, reporting or reporting the information in the committee and, and asking them to, well, to record it and then report it to the board during the board meeting, as opposed to the administrator. That, the, being that, well, Stephanie, you wanna expand on that, will you? It was to get parents, uh, greater ownership.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, in other words, the, the way it's always been in the past and way Teresa explains the charter to be, that, that there is an administrator who chairs the committees. There are board members on those committees and there are parents that volunteer. So, what I'm trying to do is get a non-board or administrator to be the chair of those committees, to take notes and then to come to the business meeting once a month of the Board of Education and report back on things they'd like to see discussed. Now, of course, you have a concern of whether or not it will get done and if, if a board, a, a parent will dedicate another night. So, Scott and Teresa's suggestion was that the administrator still organizes the meetings and perhaps co-chairs it, but we try to see if a, a parent would take ownership.
So, um, I like this idea and what I'd like to do is write down all the tasks that we have. I'm sure we'll have a lot and then we can prioritize and decide, okay, we can still do that if we want to, but is this gonna be our, our big, our big rock that we wanna make sure we tackle this year?
You know, procedurally, it has to go back to the board that charters would have to be amended, it would be...
That's, that's a big PS here, so just move on to the next one, right?
And we're having, uh, uh, we're having a committee workshop anyway, so...
Well, that's when I thought it would be discussed.
To, to flesh out anything related to committees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what else we have under the communication, group one?
Um, to, to really over-communicate, um, information from the district out to the residents and the, and the community. Um, perhaps something like a, a monthly update as opposed to the, um, what do you do now?
The SAG Harbor, I can't remember the, the one that gets mailed, the SAG Harbor Experience? Three times a year? I, I'm sorry, Katie, it's, uh, four, it's once a quarter.
Yeah.
So, we were thinking of a monthly one, emailed.
Right, that was one of the big things, is that, um, the suggestion is that it would be digital unless someone specifically, um, requested, and that ties into the next one, which is essentially, if, you know, as much as possible, all of our documents, that we wouldn't be sending anything, emailing anything home unless specifically asked by a parent to provide them with a hard copy, whether it be, you know, report cards or, or anything else. But, the monthly update is more, um, it's just that, here's, here's what's coming up in the next month at this school and with this one, you know, just...
She's knows, middle school knows, high school knows.
Well, and I'm...
Building update.
I think it's the PTA that does, uh, is it weekly or monthly? It's weekly, right?
We do a weekly.
Weekly.
And it's, it's a one-page, it's a snapshot, it's what's happening this week, boom. It's not a six-page newsletter reflecting on, you know what I mean? It definitely has a different feel than, um, the newsletter. And I think it's probably more informative.
Yep.
And less, um...
Marketing, editorial.
Editorial, thank you. Um, so, maybe a standard, um, PTA newsletter format to middle high school, right? Makes a lot of sense.
Nice thing you can do with that, and good at my former district, is actually make a magnet that goes with the brand of, of SAG Harbor and have a little spot where you can take it off the refrigerator every week. It's, you know, and it just works, like, you just have, if you're doing that every week, so that it's there, you know?
Do you know what? A lot of people have stainless steel now and they...
That's right.
It goes on the side.
It still fits on the side.
Yeah, I know.
We were just thinking of keeping people formed, you know, we were talking about the construction that's taking place and, you know, that went out today said, if, you know, keep an eye on the website for construction updates, that I actually established a specific place, um, for the capital projects up, but not financial, Jennifer, just, you know, logistical. The, the gates, gates are up, you can't go in these doors at Pearson today or for the next three days. You know, go here, go there. So, as much as we're informed of that ahead of time, try to... So as much as we're informed of that ahead of time, try to make that available for people, so that, you know, when they pull up, they're not surprised, or they can make alternate plans.
Scott worked it in.
Uh, other things you put down for communication?
That was it.
That's it. Uh, group two, what'd you put for communication tasks?
I think one of the things was, we talked about putting, um, systems in place to regularly assess what the constituency finds valuable with regard to communication.
With some sort of survey, regular, right?
Regular, because technology changes, and I remember several years ago, everybody thought that social media was a desired form of communication, and when we did the survey, it was less than what?
It was small enough.
It was smaller.
Like five percent were favorable on that, and they prefer other forms. So that changes, obviously, so we should constantly assess that.
Right. Yeah. Other things you guys put down for communication?
Oh, yeah, we talked about, she was cheating, you got a zero. We talked about, she just gave me, uh, a reminder, we talked about the website, um, being, uh, up to date and regularly maintained, so that it accurately reflects, um, what should, what else?
Systemizing.
Systemizing protocols and procedures, so that.
Why don't you just give them the notes, so?
So participated in all these discussions.
Just tell her to give her the notes, that's not fair.
That was it, that was our three.
Alright, good.
I think, yeah.
Well, is it?
I'm, that's Bella, so don't judge.
No, that's alright.
This is a judgmental.
Yeah, I think that that's.
Well, I, I didn't hear it, what's the last one?
The last one was, um. Protocol.
Systemizing protocols and procedures. Systemizing protocols and procedures.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, related to communication. What are the, yes, okay, I got it.
And they got, like, that, I think we, we didn't be specific, but about, you know, setting expectations.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And processes, so that.
Yeah. Uh, group three, tasks?
We.
We didn't get to that goal.
We did not.
Totally timed.
Good.
However, in the time since we didn't do that, but I, I just wordsmithed the top, so that it stops irritating me. So, add an increased communication, which sounds like one of those regular ones, so it can be more visionary, and incorporating some of the words we've heard, uh, in the last two days, become an engaged and inspiring, uh, school community through dynamic two-way communication.
Alright, that's headlines.
So then it was best vision.
Did you guys get that? That was good.
I wanted you to repeat that.
Yeah, say that again.
Can you say that again?
Might be in the newspaper.
Exactly, see, I know, I told my, I, I, I got a couple words in there. Uh, become an engaged and inspiring school community through dynamic two-way communication. You know, we also are, I'm sorry, but maybe become, or, I don't know, anyway, but, I'll, I'll let it tell the day as long, so. But I just, I felt like each of the big ones should just be more of a visionary statement of where we are headed, and then underneath, our need, increase, improve, enhance, whatever.
That's perfect, thank you.
Otherwise, it'd be.
That's great.
Any, any of these not work?
None at all, this is beautiful. Just have her share it with you.
Become engaged.
Yeah, eh, write it, help Barbara write it down.
Um, so that was group three, group four, did you have task, communication tasks?
I think, um, our, our focus was Stella, but the construction update would be.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We'd echo that.
Did I put that up there?
It's up there, right?
Um, group five?
Five was, um, we had, we, our concern was, um, with the Bond project, that we have a, um, bi, bi-weekly, you know, every other week, have, um, current updates on the Bond project and the Stellamaris project, and we make the icon, yes, Scott, I'm asking you to do one more thing, would be, um, like a picture, a dynamic little picture, so, so that folks had, they could actually see pictures, because they can't see what's happening on the inside, like, on the auditorium, so the, the kind of updates that might provide the board be provided to the whole audience, because as Donna said the other day, they don't, they don't know what's happening. So to get, give them that glimpse, and the same to, to, uh, um, as we move through Stellamaris, um, and to be, you know, provided some, plus with pictures and that kinda thing.
Was there another task under communication? Um, okay, so, I just, uh, that was group five, that's right.
Then how'd I do, did we get that?
Yeah. So, um, I heard construction updates three times, uh, so I'm thinking, ding, we hit one, right? Which isn't saying that we won't do these other things, but we're gonna call that a priority, right? Because we all agree that that's, that's important. We can come back and revisit it, we feel strongly that we want to add, um, another. Um, the second one was, um, create an educational model for the whole child that was the wellness one, did somebody get some verbiage that they really liked with that one? I'm just gonna summarize that one in its like, wellness, whole child. Um, did somebody wordsmith that one, anybody have some words that they like?
Yeah, we, we put down to measure, um, the passions of our students, and then underneath that, um, make sure that we have the, um, the facilities, the necessary facilities to support those passions, the necessary staff to support those passions, and the necessary financial structures to support both the staff and the facilities. Pretty broad.
That is.
And I like that, I like that a lot more than the Sag Harbor experience.
Yeah.
We talked about the Sag Harbor experience yesterday, Katie articulated it very well, um, that it was about student passion, and supporting, you know, each student's, um, interest, and letting them pursue it, and then supporting them in those endeavors.
So, you're thinking of that as more as, um, renaming the number two as more about tapping into students' passions, and.
You know, creating a school environment that allow, that gives students the freedom and supports them in identifying and pursuing their passions.
I, I, we call it a charter course, maybe it's the IB certificate, maybe it is a vocational choice. Spanish versus French, so that everybody gets the choice that's best suited for them.
Yeah, I think like, for instance, in, in, in high school, for instance, one of the nicer things about Pearson is that, one of the goals at least, is to always provide a home, a safe place for kids, uh, where they can feel comfortable and, um, in school and pursue their passions. So whether it's the art room, or music room, or it's the gym during lunch, or it's the, the science room for science research, I think a school has an obligation, a system, to try to measure through communication with the students, what, what are the passions, and then, you know, realistically, um, decide whether or not those are things we can support financially, and staff-wise.
So as far as like, making it actionable, are we talking about doing a survey for students, um, to kinda get a pulse on what their passions are?
I think that we probably could assess their passions and interests in different ways, uh, one of them would be to look at course enrollments, um, to see if, uh, current course offerings have, have decreased in popularity, and if others have increased, and again, it's probably a three-year view, not a one-year view necessarily, if you do have anomalies. Sorry, Chris, I gotta use my glasses here, uh. I think we also have an obligation related to those, um, to, to looking at measuring those passions, to also, um, educate people about the viability of those passions moving forward in terms of what comes next. So in, at Pearson, for instance, you've seen a pretty significant shift in course enrollments, away from some of the arts into some of the courses that are very much tied to, to career opportunities when they leave Pearson. I'm not sure that's a good thing, but it is related to the changing demographics somewhat.
You didn't say pathway, you said something else, co, course, charting course.
I said chart of course.
And, and you're just not educating the, the students on.
I think we have an obligation to say, hey, if you wanna go to art school, that's great, but are you cognizant of what, you know, the employment opportunities are when you leave? Because we have sent a number of art students to art school, and I'm very happy for that, but there's been a disproportionate amount who have dropped out.
Right.
Um, when you measure it.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that our group was talking about, yeah.
Uncle grandpa. What's that? Uncle grandpa.
Was sort of establishing a timeline by grade, that said, you know, if you're hoping to accomplish this, then here's some milestones and expectations at each grade level that'll help you achieve whatever, that can identify as your passion, just to help the kids, and more importantly, the parents, make sure they're on task to get to whatever point they're trying to, because, um, two of the comments were that, there comes a certain point in time where the kids have proceeded too far down a certain path, and they, they can't adjust to,
Yeah.
to, to make a change, so if, if parents are aware of that early on, that, you know, this is what happens at this grade level, or this is what's expected at this grade level, it might be helpful.
Yeah.
Kinda like, make them look ahead.
Yeah. Uh, other, what other tasks do we have, uh, you go to, group three, what tasks did you have under the wellness?
Uh, well, we, we, we spent a lot of time on that one.
Which one was wellness, I'm sorry, we missed it.
Well, it was, see, and, and I think part of the thought, again, might be the language. I'm sorry, I was, I was gonna be, but anyway, I don't know, it, just does anybody else for build, share, and measure the tradition of student achieving a successful Sag Harbor experience?
Holistic.
Is that language?
We scratched that already.
Okay, good, oh, good, so, alright, so.
We're waiting for words smite over here.
Well, um, well, because I think the vision can then be created, uh, model educational environment for the whole child that, you know, includes social, emotional, and academic opportunities, or, well, however.
Mm-hmm.
So that you list all those, and they, they're put together, I think that's a very important thing about bringing the academic and social emotional piece, but, um, Mike, why don't you do your, what you did in our group? Because I thought you sort of articulated those points so well.
Uh, I'm trying to remember.
And I, and I almost thought you forgot, but.
Well, I.
You sort of said.
You had me thinking first about how it should be phrased, so let me like, shift gears back to what I was talking about, where the, the, the tasks. Um, and I think, um, in terms of building strong school culture, to make sure that we have a strong school community that is, uh, we're intentional about it, and we're protecting, um, the students who are most vulnerable, and supporting them, I think we have to do like, what I thought of was a two-phase project, which is in the, in the near term, is to investigate what programs are available, but also best practices in terms of us as administrators, what, what we think we can do, and who we should engage, um, in the school community in that thought process, um, because it, there may be programs that are great, but I, I'm skeptical of plug-in program to solve problems. So, let's see what's out there, what's available, but also, um, what else can be successful in just, in terms of tweaking how we operate. Um, and I think that there's a sort of shorter due diligence, what's out there, and then a longer, like, hey, what are we gonna do? Um, which would be a plan, and I think the timeline we, we set on that was.
Due diligence by end of August, you said, and then a plan and implementation starting by at the latest, November fifteen.
Uh, but what, what's the, the change that you believe is now, in other words, I think we have a plethora of opportunities.
Which.
No, a due diligence on social, emotional programs, this might include substance abuse things, mental health opportunities, in other words, what programs are out there, so it's not just about lectures that come in once, and we send a bunch of kids to lectures, what, in other words, he was talking about doing a due diligence about what's out there, what are best practices, what programs, what activities the school uses, and then developing a plan based on their learning, so it's daily driven, looking what's out there, and then bringing in, uh, you know, and, and developing plans, they're well-planned out for what they want.
Great.
And I think, you know, we had, we had folks come in.
Well, we actually, we actually did that, um, with the Botvin program, which is an evidence-based program, but I think there's merit in revisiting it, and saying, how is it working? Because the program's been here now for two years. So we had a consultant come in, two consultants, to do exactly what you and Mike just talked about, which was look at what we're doing, really, um, focus in on evidence-based programs that have been utilized throughout the nation. There's not really a, a, a lot of them, but the, the most popular one was this Botvin Life Skills program, which now is offered, um, in some form, K through twelve, right, Matt?
Yeah.
And then we do it six through twelve.
Yep.
But I would say, after having seen it for two years, that my, uh, impression of it is that it's not the greatest thing since sliced bread. So, you know, we might wanna look at.
What else does that mean?
What else is out there?
Well, I think that's what, it was Michael's point, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it makes sense.
And in terms of priorities, I would say that probably most of us, we're unstable, would probably agree that that's an important priority.
Um, other tasks on that one?
Uh, moving the school's start time later. And we said even it could be done by the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, and, uh, by board resolution.
Maybe in six weeks.
Brittany, Brittany said I could.
I, I, you could.
I said whatever you want. I wanna inspire people.
I've got some links to say it down.
Um, other tasks. Uh, group, uh, four?
Oh, 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 sorry, we had one more, what is it? Uh, we also talked about assessing the arts and culture program opportunities, and exploring shared services and partnership opportunities.
That's right. In terms of expanding opportunities for Pearson students through partnerships potentially with other schools around it, but also accounting for what we actually already do, because I, I don't think folks know that.
Yeah. Um, other tasks on your list?
Yeah.
Uh, group four?
We're gonna wait for the Stella.
The big one, okay, group five?
Yes, we had, um, we, although I have not seen, I've, we, we've just heard about the wellness policy, but, um, we had celebrate, um, uphold and celebrate the wellness policy with community partnerships, because I don't think we, you know, our, our thought is, don't do this alone. We have the Wellness Foundation, we have Edible East End, we have the Community Coalition, um, and then to build upon that was to, um, rebuild traditions that we have, or to amplify the traditions that we have, like to, um, I think the word, word that, um, Donna was taught, you know, kinda that chart, chart of course, is that we already have in each grade level traditions, that children feel that spiraling up of the traditions that they have, so what is it, like the wax museum then is built upon, and they write a letter back to third graders about, here's what you're going to have, that's gonna make this so special, and, 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 and really amplify, that's a, that's really like a private school experience, but that, then you're handling the gauntlet off, but it, it helps, you know, bring the children into the school, so, which is again, when you look at drugs, you look at alcohol, you look at, you know, the whole spectrum of things that happen with children, is that lack of connection. So we're trying to build a connection that may already exist in many of these grades, or may have been extinguished, you know, traditions that were lost along the way, rebuilding those, and then doing that in symphony with the, um, with the wellness policy.
So, um, this one, we didn't look out and get that one thing that resonated with every group. Um, the common thing that I'm seeing is that there, um, needs to be a bit of assessment of some different things, right? Because, um, assessment of a art music program, assessing students' passions, right? Um, and.
I think we're saying assessing, what is the, what is the item at each grade level that makes that, so that children can't wait to get onto that next grade level, because in fourth grade, I get to do this. Well, in tenth grade, I get to do this, and, you know, Melissa Loopy does her, her Roman Greek God, you know, moment, is, did children know that, that that's what they get looked forward to when they get onto that grade?
No more.
No more.
Why not?
She's retired.
I know that, but you could still do it.
I know, I'm not.
I had the best-looking Zeus. Except it cost me five thousand dollars and some good advice.
So, I got, I gotta throw it back to the group, where do we start? What's the first task that we, we put down to launch on all these great ideas?
Well, there's, I, and here, there's a couple of different areas where there was assessment suggest, whether it was an evaluation of the, of the in-school programs we have around wellness, or around passions. So maybe it's, it maybe is identifying ways to define, uh, what the interest and need is, right? And, and so it's hard to say what we should do before that assessment is done, because that assessment might assess, uh, something that then becomes the goal.
Yeah.
And, and, and so that's, exactly, exactly, and my question is, what does that assessment look like?
Well, I think it depends on, what, what I heard, what I heard from these guys about wellness, is we're exploring what's out in the market, that's not surveying our students' find a solution, or the programs. Um, that's different than assessing the students over what their passions are, or identifi, or looking at analysis of data internally and enrolling, or, you know, or drop out, or getting certain programs, or whatever.
Or, you know, or dropout rate in certain programs or whatever. So, I think they're different, you know?
Well, I, I thought, I thought your system was at literally directly social and emotional health in terms of drug and alcohol use and mental health, right? So that's very specific. And I see that very, very different than the other cultural opportunities. I mean, obviously they both support, and then of course, there's the later school start time, which helps all of those things.
Scott, we talked about the seven dimensions of wellness, and I'm not sure that we addressed that. And I think that is really a piece of all this. And I think all of those seven dimensions really kind of pull all this together. So that might be the.
That, that might be the vehicle. Um, we had this year done a lot of work around these sorts of things. So, um, now that she's reminding me, um, finding a social, emotional, um, solution was one of the goals in the wellness policy. And later start time is one of the goals in the wellness policy. And, um, building partnerships with the community is one of the goals in the wellness policy. So I'm wondering if maybe, um, using that as our vehicle to, to pare down our goals a little bit, let's just, let's just tackle that. Because part of that policy is assessing what's working and where's that feedback loop and.
Are you talking about the current policy or the one that hasn't been presented?
The one that hasn't come forward yet.
Hasn't been presented or.
Correct, correct.
And I'm sorry, where is that at? In the wellness committee?
Um, it is on Google Drive.
It's on the chair of the policy committee.
It's supposed to be dialed up at one of our next, we're gonna meet during the summer.
It's, it's to be presented. In other words, it's the culmination of a year's worth of wellness policy notes and their recommendations coming forward. Okay.
Okay. So, um, uh, speak up, speak up, speak up, so we can all hear.
No, I was just saying it makes sense to do what you just said, because you're reinventing the wheel.
Right, right, right. And, and it's, it's, it's not adopted, right? So it's still open for change, it's still a living document. Um, but maybe we can use that as a vehicle to kind of address multiple, um, multiple areas of focus. Because I know that'll, and, and we can make sure that all these things are in it, right?
Can it, can it be adopted by the beginning of the school year?
Uh, how ambitious are you? We're not a paper.
The man's had the two readings, so depending on, depending on the policy committee, it's on the board.
I don't know, Kira has more.
Hey, I got a question though. Um, and this is more processed, so I'm gonna defer to the others on this.
I can go.
Um, if we, um, instead of going to policy committee, would it make sense for the whole board to wrap the patent workshop? I don't know.
Well, it has to be read twice. Well, I'm sorry, I'm confused. What would the, what would go to, um?
I'm assuming that the work that was done in policy committee, um, the board is gonna wanna take a test to it, right? They're gonna wanna read it and tweak it and, and whatever. So I, I would anticipate that it wouldn't be, let's.
Adopted as is, after two readings and the policy and procedures being followed.
Exactly. Exactly.
Well, and, and first with the, with the, the readings, that's more substance. And with the policy committee, that's connecting with the recommended policies and there's wordsmithing.
Right, right.
So there's a kind of two components of getting a new policy adopted. You have to have, once that policy is pretty much finished, you're gonna have to have a couple of readings in succession of meetings.
Absolutely.
We only, we have two public board meetings in August. So it may or may not be adopted in the fourth of school year. It's, it says, you know, what else?
I was just wondering, like, if we put it to policy committee, that's not the full board, then when it does go to the full board, it's almost like we have to do it twice? Because I would assume other board members, right? Okay. All right. Um, the next one, the vertical aligning. Um, what were the tasks on that one?
So, I, I would, I had a question about that, that, so the, so the raised district accountability to reinforce student and school success, which is what appears over the vertical alignment. Do you, you don't think that should be the goal? That, that, cause, cause, cause vertically align the curriculum to me just seems like one task.
Okay.
We talked about the same thing.
Perfect.
Yeah. So then I think in addition to that, uh, and that wouldn't have been one of the things that, that I would, I would have identified, although I think it's fine. I think that if you look at raised district-wide accountability to reinforce student and school success, I think the first question you have to ask is, you know, how do you define success?
Right.
And what does that look like? You know, if, if it's, if it's, if you put yourself in the mindset of a parent looking at a school district for his or her children, they're probably gonna look at your three through eight assessments, they're probably gonna look at their region scores, they're gonna look at AP, IB, uh, graduation rates. They're gonna look at where kids go to college.
Right.
Um, two-year colleges versus four-year colleges. Those are typical, um, in terms of what people look at. I don't know if that should be the measure, but I'm just saying that's what typi- typically people look at.
Can we also tee up, although it's not always directly employed curriculumized by the school, but, but, um, SAT and, um, right?
Yeah, and that's another question, you know, in terms of, you know, largely those, those scores nowadays are, are influenced by factors outside of school in terms of private tutors and such, but does, schools are starting to identify those as measures of success. And then putting the programs in place to support it. And that's philosophically something that people will disagree on. But, you know, it's the second most important factor in determining whether or not kids get into school or not, and some might argue the most important factor.
So. So maybe have one of the tasks is figure out how we're going to define success and then.
Yeah, that would be, that would be task number one for me. How do you define success? And, 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 and that question, when you say, how do you, I'm talking about the cyber school.
Um, I think this is group number one. Did you guys have a task under, on the accountability one?
Well, it does, Tracy said, we moved it up, remember, because it's like one task.
And, but you guys, you guys had something else for me?
Well, I just kinda, I, I.
We, we didn't like the accountability being stuck on administrators or, we, we thought that that was not the word we would use. You know, we, we were looking for a.
Culture of success.
Correct. Achievable course of action with all hands in the middle, not a, the principal did it wrong kind of accountability thing. So that's why we were trying to reword that.
So, um, for you guys, you were, um, rephrasing number three.
Yeah.
Right? And, and you guys had something really good for number three, correct?
I don't have the sheet, so I'll go back to. Pardon guy over there.
No, we, we talked very much about how do you define it? And then, um, we're identifying how you, um, define success. And then we talked after that, once you do that, we talked about the other things that follow. Which are, again, sort of consistent, you know, having financial systems in place to support the programs that will work towards achieving your goals. Thanks.
I hadn't, it, uh, been, thinking about long-term too, which was kind of a little bit of a thing of, you know, every year you don't wanna completely change everything, you can't do that. So you better have some kind of plan and planning, um.
Yeah, we talked about, right, we talked about, um, three to five-year studies with, with all of that.
And we talked about looking at data, that was not one year, because you can have an anomaly, a class that has a different composition.
Right, right.
Or, or that, that test is written differently. So really looking at, let's say, three-year, three-year data, I'm, with the point, point they tossed out.
Longer.
But we might, we're a little bit more of a long-term view, to make the reflection is clear.
Um, but you have to bear in mind also that there are districts out there, very good districts, who have steered clear of some of the measures that we just talked about. AB and IB, I mean, is it Larchmont? I think it was Larchmont. Or Scarsdale was one of the ones that dropped those programs.
Right.
Because they decided that their own curricula was more, um, high quality and they didn't wanna be measured by those outside measures.
Right.
And all you gotta do is look to the opt-out movement this past year and say, hey, do we really wanna put that much weight on three through eight?
Exactly. Um, so I'm gonna put, um, figuring out how to define success as a task and vertical alignment as a task, not the big goal, because that's something that we could just do. Um, and for group, um, five, did you guys have tasks under?
We did, we had what we felt would be a really, um, uh, a task that addresses where we know we're fragile, which is math, but would bring everybody to the table. And we have a, a good tool that goes along with it would be K through twelve math vocabulary. Because with the Common Core shift, the math vocabulary has shifted. Now we have, the region's vocabulary has shifted, which leaves our children, um, in a vulnerable spot because they, and our, and our teachers as well. And that's a really soft, good place to come together because we're not talking about numbers and, and the, the opt-out numbers aren't, that's, that's not real data right now. So that gives people a good, soft place and there's some really quality, um, uh, information coming out of the University of Buffalo that, that has all that. So you can, you can all be talking the same language and children aren't being left out in the cold on that.
And I think that ties in nicely with the vertical piece, like, we can do that.
Yeah. Kindergarten through twelfth grade, we're all talking the same language when we talk math.
So, um, this one actually seems easier because there's only two things, a vertical piece with language and then, um, with specifically math vocabulary and then with the other curriculum. And then maybe some sort of, um, decision about how we're gonna define success, which metrics we're going to use.
Well, well, hold on, you didn't, um, uh, group three did not weigh in on this particular goal.
My fault.
Britney and Michael, you had your, your, your thing and your thing, analysis of IB and your middle years program?
Yes.
Oh, thank God, you can do it.
So I think the, the most pressing task is NYPD, which involves that vertical alignment very much so.
Is what, Michael?
The middle years program for IB.
M Y, I thought you said N, okay.
Sorry. Um, and which, which, uh, involves that vertical alignment. And, um, I think last night you brought up that it's high time we had an analysis of IB program up till now. And I think it's, that, that's right, but I think that that's more my task personally than the broader administrative team.
And I was thinking, and my point was more just, do we, do we understand why, if, if we expecting a higher percentage, why they're not even able? What are the, what are the drivers? Is there only a technical part of the collection?
Yeah. And then a strategic plan that comes out of that, so.
Right.
Uh, I also had issue with the, how this is phrased. And I think it, it, it really is, it can be broad, cause this is broad, but I think it stays away from some of these words that I think are problematic to folks. But it's, it's a year to year and it's really a core responsibility, how we set goals around it. But it's just strengthening the academic program for improved outcomes. And then what we decide are priorities year to year may shift.
Can I ask you a question? If you, if your next year is, and let me use the right word, what, the middle year next year would be the authorization year.
Yes.
So your offering of seventeen, eighteen would be your sixteen, seventeen sixth graders going into seventh, am I correct?
Yeah, but it'd be, yeah, Brittany's the one who knows the most about it, but it would be grades six through ten all at once. So it wouldn't be phased in with just the sixth grade.
Okay, it would be the.
This year's fifth graders, this year's fifth graders will be their first full NYPD implementation if we gain authorization in the spring.
This year's fifth graders. We kicked around grabbing them now.
That's a good question, cause it's not like it starts, it's already happening, cause they're planning that way now.
Correct. But when those fifth graders move across the street here into sixth grade,
Yeah.
they will start to have to think about charting a course for six through twelve on a diploma, a non-diploma, a certificate. Yes, if you catch them now, you're gonna have those conversations about, they don't have to make choices.
I think. I think in six.
Correct. I'm sorry, I didn't mean they had to make a choice. I, I, but they will, if you have the initial conversations with them, then you're either gonna pique their interests or, or not and let them to start to find their own success.
Yeah, I don't, but I don't think that, I think much like in Southampton or East Hampton or any high school, you can't say to a sixth or seventh grader, hey, you're gonna take seven or eight A P courses in your last two, three years of high school. You can't, you can't really guess that.
Correct. I'm, I'm, I understand, but.
Yeah. And, and then the other thing to understand about IB, and maybe it just needs to be said here, the difference between the two programs, one of the, one of the, the, the greatest draws to the diploma program was that prior to bringing it here, we tried to really implement best practices. But if I'm, you know, an earth science teacher and Jeff Nichols comes into my classroom and says, hey, these are really good instructional practices. I know you're doing a good job, but I'd really like you to implement these and, and integrate them into your teaching. He's gonna say, yeah, thanks Jeff, but I got my regions and shut the door and go back to doing what he or she is doing. The difference with IB is that what, basically what gets measured is what gets done. And IB had their assessments with the diploma program built into the package. So basically, because those skills and habits of mind were being measured throughout the year, it was much more likely that that was going to happen. The difference with the NYPD program, and you need to understand this, is that it is fundamentally different in that there are those summative assessments and even some of the assessments, the formative assessments that are built into the diploma program, they're not nearly the same with the NYPD program. The NYPD program is more of a framework. So, uh, it's, and that's why for many, many schools, it's much more likely that the diploma program is going to be present and the NYPD program is not. Because many people are cognizant of the fact that what gets measured is what gets done. So, this is good, because it'll, it'll, it'll introduce the types of thinking to kids at a younger age. But it is a, it is a much different program than the diploma program in terms of the structure.
And every student is, is engaged.
Yes, it's an all-inclusive program.
Uh, it's late and I don't wanna, uh, thank you, and I understand that, but, but the only thing on the, I thought the, the most terrific thing we did this year was to send the letter home to the parent that says, uh, your appointment is Thursday at two o'clock and please bring Johnny with you and meet with your guidance counselor.
Mm-huh.
If you're unable to come Tuesday at two o'clock, call me and we'll switch it. Uh, to me, that was the, the best outreach to the community and one of the smartest things we did. And I know none of my children watch videos, okay? But in that meeting, in one of my discussions, the guidance counselor said, we might not be able to fit chorus in your schedule in the ninth grade because you're taking this other class, honors something. And my conversation was redirected that our lifelong goal right now is to sing. So please build the schedule around chorus. That's, I, I just had to say that. Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm seeing this reoccurring theme come up with the charter course with the wellness, right? And that pathway and prepping kids. Um, I think those that are good at wordsmithing, um, we can probably figure out a way to articulate that. But I, I'm seeing that, um, that vertical alignment is going to hit, um, the middle years program, the math vocabulary, um, that along with, um, figuring out how we're gonna define success, which I think is gonna be much trickier, but I think is, is good to be on our radar.
There was one more. Did you write down, cause the other one they had was the analysis of the IB in high school and develop a strategic plan to improve that? Did you capture that?
No, I didn't have that.
Okay, so analysis of IB in high school and develop strategic plan to improve that. That wasn't for me, but it was my notes from what you had said. And then, um, the other, uh, thing that came up was the, the transition study skills executive funding to explore and.
That could be the personal thing too, cause it is middle school stuff, so it doesn't even need to be, but yes.
But I think those are really important issues and I think.
That goes along with the charting course.
Even in the academic, I think that actually is something that supports wellness, it's gonna hold nine yards. So I think that was, I, I, I didn't wanna make sure it didn't get lost.
No.
Yeah. And, and, and again, like, there's things that we're, we're gonna do that support these goals that may not end up on, on the big list, which is, which is completely appropriate. Last one. Um, right, we're to the last one?
Yes.
You have two more.
So let's talk about, okay, sorry, I thought we were, I thought we were Stella.
Um, do you think that, that the last one should be a task underneath the second to last one?
Yeah.
We broke it up.
Tell me what we did. I'm, yeah, what'd you guys decide?
So I was thinking that the, it wasn't, oh, go ahead, Chris, you said. Okay, you weren't panicking. We were saying that that would, that fiscal responsibility and, uh, sustainability is a broad umbrella and that Stella Maris is one factor, um, that would fall underneath that.
And, and, and we were thinking about it from a facility standpoint, um, but also from a, a program standpoint, it also works there too. So it's, it's, it's a component of doing the bigger thing.
So we added one.
The whole of the fiscal part.
Well.
And the task.
No.
It's, it's a.
No? Did I misunderstand?
It's a, it's a, it's a scratch. And I know it, I would have pricked it. There you go. We also raised a three to five that we felt like, the sustainability meant that you needed to have a three to five, your eye on what you were doing. Of course, the board are then measuring it.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Shared services, we also mentioned, and then to evaluate consolidation and to, to have some energy around that, not weighing in whether we should or shouldn't, but it be something that we should be always being exploring or we should be revisiting periodically.
Yeah, I think we currently do, Jennifer, don't you, we have a three and five-year plan or whatever it is, something like that?
We have a four-year long-range plan.
This one, yeah. Right in between.
And we're going to be developing a five-year uh plan for our facilities.
Right.
Based on the building mission survey. And the four-year plan gets updated every year.
But don't you think bond building Stella needs to become its own little category and gets its own little yellow sheet?
I, I do, I, I think that Stella.
Right, I would think that's Matt's biggest.
So I, I think that, I mean, the goal is Stella, right?
Well, let's think about, but, but let's think about that, you know, I, cause I don't, cause I don't think, like, right now, we have a building project here
Okay.
that is roughly a what, a ten or twelve million dollar bond, I don't know what it is.
Stella Maris?
No.
No, the one here was.
Seven, eight?
But it's a big one.
Eight mil, and so Stella is twelve mil, they're both big projects that for next year, we've got to focus on.
Right. Right.
But I don't think we're breaking out the eight million dollar and the twelve, so why wouldn't you just fold both of them under?
A goal.
Yeah.
Building bonds Stella.
Well, I, I think it's broader than that, because how we, particularly when, if you want to, yeah, Stella, how we think about Stella and using it, if you want to talk about programmatically.
Right.
Is not, is not siloing it, but you look at your overall analysis of what your needs are, what program you want to deliver and see how that can support or draw some innovation, but you wouldn't do that in an isolated fashion. So that's why we thought it really was something underneath some, some goal.
Yeah, a task underneath it, but.
Right. The border.
What, what was that task, Chris doing an analysis?
Well, I think that facilities, facilities are usually driven by uh program needs in a district. Program needs, population, demographics, all that stuff. So I think the analysis, which a lot of it's already been done.
Right.
Um, you know, would, 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 I would look at those factors and, and that's gonna drive, you know, what happens.
Yeah, and I, and I heard some of those same things that went around, so I, I want to hit all the groups and maybe, and because these are so intertwined, um, again, I don't want to get too crazy about what's where.
We, we put this under. No, it's okay. Yeah, no, no, I, I won't.
Oh, you've hardly got to go, sorry.
Well, let's go back to group one.
That's very sweet, Susan.
Under your, um, on, on the back page, what tasks did you have under these and what were your thoughts? Did you do some rearranging?
We broke it in half, we put programs, Jeff's math six to twelve, uh, social, emotional programs separated. We.
Oh, you wrote it that way, that makes sense.
We, we picked up math six to twel- correct, as, as a.
Oh, it was correct. Gotcha.
Yeah, if you, if you were asking, are we moving up the bond underneath now? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, no, I was just asking what tasks, what actionable tasks you had under either building or task, but you had a task under programs?
Well, this. Well, this is where we, we get put in about, um, in incorporating the seven dimensions of wellness.
Okay, so we got that, we got that, I just wanted to make sure we've got everything.
Across the K twelve grade.
Just right.
Okay, so let's look at these tasks down here for Stella.
Can I just suggest the, the bond project, one of the things that we recently did was just say to complete the two thousand thirteen bond project one by the two thousand sixteen calendar year as a go, as, as a task, and I, I think that's, that's reasonable, that, that, I mean, that's, you know, and we kinda, like, put those two bonds, the two thousand thirteen bond one gated a ton, you know, like, by.
By the end of the.
Yeah, complete bond.
Calendar year or?
Calendar year.
Are you, are you looking to all aspects of that bond?
Right, probably not gonna happen.
Maybe seven, yeah.
So academic year would probably be more.
But we have, well, we haven't, I believe, I don't think we've seen the schedule of all the things in that bond and when it's projected to be delivered.
Right.
So I would be nervous about committing to that until we see that.
So maybe the task is find a timeline, create a timeline?
Well, yeah, that's something we, that was one of our tasks, was, you know, establish timeline, but it was important to us that each of the things that we had broken, that the public was kept informed, I mean, active communication. But, yeah, identifying a timeline and assessing.
Does it exist already, Eric?
Okay, then I won't even bring up bond project two.
Wait, could, could, you let him, yeah, go ahead.
No, I just, I just think it would be an unrealistic goal to have the thirteen project done by the end of two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Because there are some, there are some major components that we are, haven't even established a timeline for.
Fair enough, and, you know what? Okay.
So, so may, so maybe the task is to create a timeline, right, so just so we all know.
I, I think, I think would, would be to amend the timeline.
I, I, I think that's a little dangerous, but, I mean, there is, there is a time, there is a timeline.
There is a time, right.
Yeah.
So, I think saying we're gonna create one, maybe to, to.
So communicate.
Yeah.
That, that's what we meant, was just informing people what.
Communicate and, and our job is to support it so that it's done in a timely fashion, that's what we need to make sure.
Right, right.
I think, you know, and often.
Timeline's what it is, right.
And reset and showcase it as, as each piece gets finished and then celebrate its, its, its completion.
Right. Right. Right.
So that people feel a sense that this is really happening and how this is benefiting children, because it, we're in it now.
Right.
Um, did you have other tasks?
Well, ju- just from an, an infrastructure perspective, you know, needing to do a needs assessment on the building to identify, um, what needs to be done there physically, um, associating or identifying the budget and determining what can, what can be done within the established budget. And, yeah, making sure that there was a, um, budget that could sustain the recurring costs of whatever programs, uh, that were being used for. Am I missing anything, Stephanie?
Nope.
So you're on the last one now, not the one above?
Well, we're kinda doing them at the same time, because people felt like the building and sustainability was so intertwined that.
Cause Michael, you had, you and Brittany both had big concerns about the last one, you wanna?
Well, I, I think it, um, to what Jeff said, to make sure that what we do with Stella Maris comes out of what the, the need is.
I'll remember.
And I think Stephanie articulated well last night, the real goal here would be to make sure that it is as small a distraction to program as possible. So if that's the goal, I think the plan is to make a plan.
Right. The, the language you used, which I thought was really great, is develop a roadmap for Stella. And then you both mentioned about the importance of communicating to all the public fears and so forth, which I think has come up.
So that way we.
Yep.
Yeah.
Otherwise, people may, it's gonna take time, they're just gonna sit, sit there, and it, couldn't be bought, I'd have what's going on, right, right. But also just to have a plan so that we all know what we're doing, so it's, it's not reactive and we can focus on still maintaining and strengthening our progress.
Right.
Yeah. Uh.
There's only one other thing in my notes from our group, from the one above, um, I, I had just, you know, uh, keeping with the toxin-free and great, toxin-free and being green, sort of reduce toxic chemical exposure wherever possible, that might apply to the field, which is part of our buildings and facilities.
Oh, you had that in our building?
Yeah, we had that as a bug. So, this goal in buildings.
We had that as a, we had that as a goal a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
When that was, that was my first year here.
I mentioned the explore program from a team building with the middle school.
But that goes in the other thing.
I think four.
But you know what, I think we forgot to mention it.
That's all right, I'll do it. It's fine.
Thank you. Anyway, should we get credit for it?
That's fine. Well, do it, we should be doing it anyways, it's fine.
Five, did you, you do four, four?
Two and four and five together.
Oh, four, no, go ahead.
No, 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 group four, group four.
So on the, on the needs assessment, we, um, we kinda combined, combined forces with the regular ed side and the special ed side to develop a, an assessment identifying the needs of the families with potential four-year-olds, both here in the community, as well as determine the needs of surrounding districts and what needs and or wants of surrounding districts. So I E, reaching out to possibly, uh, P P S directors and some of the neighboring districts to see if any of their goals could be met by, uh, programs offered at Stella Maris. And then, um, you know, I present that data to the board and the community. And then also kinda concurrently, um, continue researching and identify partnerships that can be created with outside providers to enhance program offerings potentially at, at Stella Maris.
That goes back to revenue that came up a lot last night.
And sustainability.
And sustainability.
We also talked about exploring the regulations from the county, because when you deal with students with disabilities at preschool level, the county picks up that bill.
Right.
So what would we have to do to be state approved?
Right.
So we need to draw revenue.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that that.
Or that would cost us.
Right.
Right, that can be wrapped up in, in an assessment, right, so not only assessing the needs, but also assessing like the viability of other outside programs and other revenue streams and that sort of thing.
Right. And then the other piece we talked about is that, that information is gonna be very helpful in determining, um, some of the work that we may get into with the architects as far as, we know that there are, you know, state mandates that have to be met as well, as far as the plant goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's also going to be our, our wants at that new site and making sure that it's the best place for four-year-olds, for example. Or if the special ed, um, population were to increase and we wanted to offer different programs there, that we have the proper facility to, to meet those needs.
So as one of the tasks, as we're talking about this in theory, for this Stella Maris bond project specifically, is to create greater, uh, to define greater clarity on what that building is, programs are gonna be in that building, because you put something out in front of the public, which was kind of, at that time, we felt like was potentially the best option, but, but as time passes and we, we do this analysis, that we do other things that we want to do in there. So is there, do we kind of have a date, or that has to be determined, and if we know that date, then we want to make sure that we've got that plan created by then, right?
Well, that leads into our, our goal, or how we had our task, which was on, is that we do, when the board looks at architects to hire, is then the board has to meet with the architects and say, you know, here's our tickle list, here's all the things you're gonna want from them. And so we had under ours was to, I, I'm building directly off, because we had exactly what Matt said, is, um, talk to our neighbor and districts, um, finding out what the needs assessments were for our children with special needs and, um, for daycare, like, where there, um, community agencies that would want to take that place, what would be the bill the plant needs to meet those, um, uh, for the needs for the children. But then also discussing with our community stakeholders, our administrators, um, you know, even our senior citizens. Um, I know that there's a lot of interest from, um, the community colleges, um, to, to take lease space. Having those conversations front and loaded and getting that information back to the Board of Education so that when they're weighing in on these architects, that they, they know, here's the things that are gonna build a revenue coming in. So that's, we, that's what we had for our piece.
Well, I think that ties in nicely to the roadmap, is to know what we want before we.
Yeah, before we get any, before we even put a shovel on the ground, right.
Yep. Exactly. Um, did we get to all the groups for, um, these two? Um, I, I, I think this is all coming together really well. Um, the only thing that I'm struggling with, I think, which is what you're all saying, is structure seems to be a little bit of a hang-up, whether this is a goal or a vision or that sort of thing. But I, I feel like that is, um, kinda details, right, getting, getting caught in the weeds and we don't need to have a big conversation about whether it should be on this tier or that tier. What I'd like to do is, um, maybe get some volunteers and people that are good at that kind of structure and good at wordsmithing, and maybe we can just craft these thoughts, because I feel like our, our vision and our tasks are, have been pretty well articulated and we can, we can draft something together and then that can parlay down into, um, building goals and individual goals and those sorts of things. So if there's tasks up here that may not meet, you know, board or district level, um, they can still be building level goals or, they'll get done, it's just that these are the things that were at the midpoint. But I do think that we have, um, narrowed it down to, um, a handful. Under communication, um, we feel like it's important to have timely construction updates. We can talk about, um, as a board, how often, how often do we want that? Um, under wellness, maybe, um, tackling the policy and seeing if we can use that as a vehicle to kind of address a lot of these issues, if not, if not all of them. Um, the, the one about accountability, um, it sounds like we've got some, some wordsmithing there, there, we can take accountability out and it's just about, um, the success of, um, students academically, but there's definitely a vertical alignment piece that's implementing the middle years program, um, and improving the I B program and those, that vertical piece. Um, but then also defining how we're going to, um, measure success. And then I, I think that this, uh, fiscal piece is business as usual, right, we kinda always do this. So if we want to tie these together in some way, we're open to that, um, but we definitely have roadmap and analysis needs. Um, and, um, coming up with a sustainable budget as the first steps for Stella Maris. Do you guys feel like what, that maybe we could, um, craft something with a handful of people and, and throw it out there and, and feel good about it?
That's how this was developed, um, uh, through, you know, two, three years ago was, uh, was a handful that, you know, I think David did the wordsmithing on, David Diskin did the wordsmithing on the Haggis at Harvard School Experience, so I just remember the meetings, it was a while ago.
And, and I'm open to whether that's administration or board members or anybody that's, that's interested in, in that part of it.
I, I would love, you know, based on those tests and the stuff, I, I, I'm not clear, um, with the administrators, which like three, you know, handful they feel are the most important. That's what I'd like to, because even if it wasn't repeated by many, collectively, if we do, we talk to the new member, these are the two, that we say, we really feel we want to hang our head on or whatever. So for me, I, where the asterisks are, they may be important, but I'm not, I don't feel like I've gotten clarity that collectively the administrators think that like, those are the one in each category. So I would prefer before wordsmithing come, or maybe it's parallel, that, that we hear back from the managers, not now, because it's, it's after nine thirty, but they can reflect on this, and then it's looking at it, they may say, you know what, we're all still looking at that top list and we all would not feel comfortable if that one wasn't, like, I just feel like so much has to be driven by that, so I, I would feel more comfortable for them to reflect on it and get back to us a handful in each category.
I love that.
Now that we've gone through this work.
We do, they can do, they could do an exit pass with a highlighter, or they can, we can put them up a cabinet and nobody looking, they can do a little dot and that can be a visual.
Whatever you guys think, I, I think it's late now, so I would say maybe a sense.
Well, and I think reflection, then you mentioned Chris is key, because I know that when you get a lot of information at one, it's, it's a long line.
Yeah, they started very early today.
All right, I know you guys are all gonna fight for the motion.